Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the regular board meeting of the Board of Supervisors this Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025. Madam Clerk, could we have a report up from last closed session?
Closed session from April 8th. Item one, pursuant to government code 54956.95, Conference of Legal Counsel Re-Workers Conversation Claim, Robert Beasley, County of Calaveras, Claim Number 20222000760. Board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. And will you please now read out for our closed session today?
Closed session for today, April 22nd. Item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, Conference of Legal Counsel Re-A anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation. Item two, pursuant to government code 54957A, consultation with Calaveras County Information Technology Security Personnel regarding matters posing a threat to the security of public buildings, essential public service is the public's right of access to public services or facilities, or a threat to critical infrastructure controls or critical infrastructure information relating to cybersecurity.
Thank you for that report up. And we will now go into...
Public comment?
Oh, sorry, yes, we have any public comment? Seeing none, we will adjourn to closed session. Good morning, everybody, and welcome back. Thank you. And all rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Purble, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I... Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start with staff announcements. Are there any staff announcements? Ah, here we go. Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning, Board. Lisa Medina and Shana in Farmington Management Agency. This is Buttercup. Buttercup is a tri-color Australian shepherd. He's a little over a year and weighs about 65 to 70 pounds. Super friendly, as a matter of fact, he licked all my lipstick off. So Buttercup came to us after he was attacked by another dog. He had severe wounds and we sent him to a veterinarian. He was treated and now he's completely healed. He plays well with all other dogs, including both male and female. Very affectionate, well socialized, and he bonds quickly. He will sit for treats. On a treat... Look, see, he has my lipstick on his muzzle! Due to his size and his puppyish exuberance, older children are preferred for a home. Buttercup is very strong and will benefit from training classes, very smart, too. A meet and greet is required if you have another dog. So this is Buttercup with my lipstick on his muzzle. So I also want to announce that the April 12th free rabies vaccine, a microchip clinic, was a success. Thank you, Dr. Kathy Gatlin, for volunteering your time and to vaccinate 153 more of our animals and implant 42 microchips. Thank you, Focus, our CCAS staff and volunteers for making this another successful event. The next free Focus clinic will be held here again at the Government Center on May 3rd from 9:00 to 11:30. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
That's a hard act to follow up. Hi, I'm Elena Belli. I'm the Airport Manager at Calaveras County Airport. Just remind everybody, in a week and a half from now is the Airport Day. It'll be open from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We're going to have the Cal Fire Firehawk come through, and if they'll be there, as long as they don't have to respawn. We'll have our community partners, the CHP will be out there, our Calaveras Sheriff's Office will be out there, there'll be airplane rides hosted by the Experimental Aircraft Association Flying Club, food vendors, and animal services will be out there with a few more of their dogs that people would like to adopt.
Thank you, Elena. Airport Day is awesome. Ashy?
Good morning, Chair and fellow Board members. Quick announcement, on May 8th, we'll be doing a ribbon cutting for Rock Creek Phase 3A, so we're going to be implementing it into our full operations on that day. So I invite members of the public, Board members, anyone to come and join us for the next 30 years of responsible waste disposal.
Good morning, Board. Just a quick reminder, Thursday of this week, we're doing EOC activation exercise, where we'll be playing with our live systems and all that. We'll include you guys as part of the actual notifications like we would do, so it'll be a full rollout of if and when a disaster strikes, what we'll do for EOC. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other staff announcements? Seeing at the end of staff announcements, I would just like to acknowledge a special guest today. Thank you Supervisor Karen Mendy for being here. And move you on, Madam Clerk, item number three?
Item three, by the Clerk's office, we will be pulling this item, but it is a proclamation, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, adopt a proclamation recognizing the 2025 alvictorian and salutatorium from Bret Hart High School. The students are volunteering, doing volunteer work today, so they are unavailable, but they will be available for our May 13th meeting to receive the proclamation.
Thank you. And actually, I'm going to do a little switcheroo here, and we're going to start with item number five and then go to four.
Item five. Proclamation, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, adopt a proclamation honoring Irene Purble, a Holocaust rescuer, for her bravery and dedication to keeping the memory of the Holocaust alive and educating future generations.
Thank you. I'm going to share this proclamation with Supervisor Andal. I was lucky enough a couple of years ago to sit down and have lunch next to an absolutely amazing woman, and her life stories just blew me away, and I was fortunate enough to bring this to the Board, but seeing as she is a constituent of District 2, Supervisor Andal is going to help me out with it. So this is a proclamation honoring Irene Purble, a Holocaust rescuer, for her bravery and dedication to keeping the memory of the Holocaust alive and educating future generations. Whereas in 1942, the Holocaust, a horrific period of genocide, resulted in the systematic murder of millions by the Nazi regime. And whereas despite the immense suffering and danger, many individuals risked their lives to help Holocaust victims, providing shelter, food, and support. And whereas during this time, Irene Purble's family assisted in the effort to hide Jews from the Nazis. And whereas these courageous rescuers demonstrated extraordinary acts of compassion and humanity, serving as a beacon of hope during this dark time.
And whereas, on June 6th, 1943, just six days after Irene's 10th birthday, the Gestapo invaded her family home and found two Jews that were immediately taken away. On this same day, Irene's father was taken to never be seen again. And whereas, the next day, the Nazis returned and emptied the Purbles' home of all belongings. The Purble family was forced to leave and find shelter in a small apartment that the Dutch Resistance helped them find. And whereas Irene's activism and public speaking aim to keep the memory of the Holocaust alive and prevent such atrocities from happening again. Whereas, it is essential to remember and honor the victims of the Holocaust, as well as the survivors and the rescuers and the liberators. Thank you, Irene.
I am very honored and humbled to be here today for this very special proclamation. Just two weeks ago, I had the privilege to participate at the Cypress College to the Holocaust Remembrance Day, where I met a dozen of Holocaust survivors. It was a very emotional encounter, like finding your long-lost relatives. We hugged each other with tears in our eyes, many of them more than 100 years old. It gave me a sensation of emergency because of our age. We have to do it now. We are a vanishing generation. And I am extremely grateful to receive from the Board of Supervisors the proclamation for the people who, in the occupied countries, who risked their lives in order to help the Jewish people who were persecuted by the horrible Nazi regime. I cannot stop without thanking the Americans for what they did for us, liberating us from a most horrible, cruel regime, and many of them stayed behind on the endless fields of White Crosses. We, every year, we have big celebrations. We still have waiting lists of people who want to take care of an American grave. We, our veneration and our gratitude to the Americans is lasting. We never will forget our liberators, and we never will thank them enough.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comments on this?
Am I giving her a hug?
Yes.
My name is Marty Crane, and I am so honored that in my lifetime, which... Where are the tissues? There used to be a box of tissues up here. Take a handful and pass them around. So I am so honored that I had the opportunity to get to know Irene over the years and along with others, Marty Johnson and a few others, who have driven her to these wonderful presentations that she does and to get the word out. And I think it is never too late to inform the public about the history, our children about the history. It is, and it is never too late to reexamine your life and find a new purpose, you know, and then make a difference. And for years Irene taught solar cooking through the Rotary Club, and then that got to be a little too much, but that's, that is such a critical skill set, and it's very easy. So she turned that over to the Volunteer Center, and so we're putting the word out there. Anybody, any group, anybody that wants to learn, we have all her equipment and curriculum. Please call the Volunteer Center, we will get it to you. But in today's world, you never know if you're going to, if you're going to have electricity, if you're going to have food, you just never know. So you need to have this skill set, and I want to thank Irene for entrusting us all with moving that forward. And we love you, Irene.
Anybody else? I'll bring it back to the Board. I have one of Irene's solar cookers, and I have used it. Thank you.
So I'll second, and then will you take a vote?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Therefore, be it proclaimed that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes and honors Irene Purble, a Holocaust rescuer, and reaffirms our commitment to remembering the victims and learning from history.
Irene, would you mind sitting here, and we're going to do the next proclamation, and we'll bring everybody up around. I will move on now to item number four. Madam Clerk?
Item four, proclamation, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, adopt a proclamation proclaiming April 23rd through April 30th, 2025, as days of remembrance and memory of the victims of the Holocaust.
And I'll hand the gavel over to Supervisor Stoppard.
Thank you, Board, Chair. Whereas... Whereas the Holocaust was the state, was the state-sponsored systematic persecution and annihilation of European Jewry by Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945. Jews were the primary victims. Six million Jews were murdered in Roma. People with disabilities and Poles were also targeted for destruction or decimation for racial, ethnic, or national reasons. Millions more, including gay men, Jehovah's Witnesses, Soviet prisoners of war, and political dissidents, also suffered grievous oppressions and death under Nazi tyranny. Whereas the history of the Holocaust offers the opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments. And whereas we, the people of Calaveras County, should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny. And whereas we should actively redidicate, redidicate ourselves to the principles of individual freedom and a just society. And whereas the days of remembrance have been set aside for the people of Calaveras County to remember the victims of the Holocaust, as well as to reflect on the need for respect of all peoples. And whereas pursuant to an act of Congress, Public Law 96-388, October 7th, 1980, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council designates the days of remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust to be April 23rd through April 30th, 2025, including the day of remembrance known as Yom Hashoah, April 24th, 2025. Do you have a comment? I think enough, it's been said. Okay. Thank you.
I just want, my name is Gail Bungie. I want to thank you for doing this. I lost relatives during the Holocaust, great uncles, great aunts. All of my family is Jewish. I appreciate you doing this. Thank you.
I just wanted to say I neglected to state that when I shared that we can all look inward and find a new purpose, make a difference, Irene's purpose for the last, I don't know how many years, has been to do presentations at our schools and at anybody that invites her to speak. And I don't know what the count is now, but at one point it was 110. I don't know what the current count is. I'm sure Irene knows. Anyway, but thank you, Irene, for living your purpose.
Thank you, Marty.
Hello, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Dr. Roger Orman. I'm the current president of the motherlode Jewish community, and I'd like to thank Irene for all of her work that she did, and also I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for recognizing the fact that the Holocaust did exist and it was a terrible atrocity to humanity. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Orman. I'll bring it back to the Board. I'll move to the side. I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes on a 5-0 vote of the Board. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors proclaim the week of April 23rd through April 30th, 2025, as days of remembrance and memory of the victims of the Holocaust, and in honor of the survivors, as well as the rescuers and liberators, and further proclaim that we, as citizens of Calaveras County, should work to promote human dignity and to speak out against hate whenever and wherever it occurs. Thank you.
Would you please come up and receive the proclamation? And actually, if I could then ask everybody who's here for this proclamation and for Irene's proclamation to come up, and we'll take a big picture together.
That would be almost the whole room.
I know. I'm shooting her film.
Ready?
Everybody quick.
Hey, Will, you didn't give him the picture!
I'm near a spirit.
Well...
Harry.
Yeah, Irene's a dear friend. Yeah.
Yeah, where are you?
That's a beautiful sign you painted.
Oh, it's, oh, even now I saw those. I liked those. I didn't do the horse, that was a grease now. No, everybody thinks me because I have the black glasses, but it's heated because of them. So I find it, I suppose, a little...
So you just got back from your boat?
Yeah.
Excuse me, before everybody leaves, I just want to thank Supervisor Thine. Supervisor Thine, thank you very much for coming.
You know what, I mean, not many people get a standing ovation.
Would you like, would you like to stay?
At least you found your way here today.
I am old.
Yeah, it's okay to walk through.
Moisés. This one. Que bonheur, que bonheur. C'est vraiment spécial. She needs some more rosé. Yeah. Thank you for being here.
Start of the film.
You're a...
Scene one.
You're enlightened inspiration. Thank you for it, yeah. I'm working.
Congratulations, Chair and Sir. Yes?
Well, we have, Arlo and Susan is still...
Here are me too. Here are me too. So.
Oh, actually, they've already left. I just wanted to thank Thomas and Teresa and PATV, who are help, and Kathy Galino, who are helping to coordinate a movie about Irene. A documentary. I just was saying, I wanted to thank Thomas and Teresa, Kathy Galino, and PATV, who are coordinating the film about Irene. Documentary. Great. Okay. Sarah, you all right?
Yeah.
I will move on now to general public comment.
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the thirty-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Thank you, Ms. Crane.
Good morning. Honorable members of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. Uh, my name is Marty Crane. As the highest elected leaders of Calaveras County, responsible for the health and general welfare of our residents, what is your plan to resist the current federal administration as they are actively working to undermine everything we hold dear? Our democracy, the FDIC, public education, healthcare, our right to vote, our personal liberties, and our right to feel safe and secure in the knowledge that our elected officials will have our backs and be proactive on these very issues? For example, the current president and his administration are actively undermining our social security program under the guise of streamlining, while populations are being cast aside into the fray of mean-spirited, unnecessary uncertainty. Thousands of folks of all ages and health challenges rely on social security as their only source of support and income. Money I paid into all my life. Missing just one monthly check will put them in danger of living on the streets or worse. Even though we, charming husband and I, have personally saved for years so as to prepare for retirement with no mortgage, life, health, fraud, theft, and economic emergencies do happen. I could very well be on the street with thousands of others. When there is no money to pay gas, food, rent, the house payment, insurance premiums, or property taxes, your ability to volunteer and participate in your community is severely restricted, if not eliminated. When there is no money to pay our property taxes, there will be no money to pay your salaries and any of our fine and deserving county employees. Productive conversations with all stakeholders are essential to achieving better ideas and better policies. Ones that work for the people that you serve. You don't have to do this all by yourself, nor can you. Please reach out to all stakeholders. If they can't come to you, please seek them out and listen. 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 So I ask you, what is your plan? Please figure it out. I hope you're already having those conversations. The people are speaking. Really ask yourself, are you listening? There's no time to waste. We're counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Terry.
Good morning. Good morning, Terry McBride, New California State Committee Chair, Senator and President Potem of New California State Senate. A few, I guess about a month ago, I came and the most amazing people spoke of the effects of taking the COVID job. That was, in some cases mandated, some cases forced, some cases coerced. Some cases, people were just shamed into taking it and going against their own body's autonomy and choice to make the choices for their body. Well, the, um, the truth of that is starting to come out. The fact that that was Orwellian and, um, communistic in itself was something to be concerned about. But there's articles that are coming out. Now, these are scientific documents, scientific journals. Nearly half of the COVID-nineteen deaths labeled as COVID deaths were not due to COVID, new COVID study. Now, this was in Athens, Greece, but when you want to bet that it's here too. This was by Scientific Reports. These are scientific, you need to start researching because this is going to come back and bite you because this county is going to get sued. Guarantee it. How many people did you, as a board, not everybody was sitting up there at that time, recommend getting a shot and encouraged each other to go get the shot? And now we're seeing, I have friends whose lives have been destroyed. I'm sure you do too. Um, a breaking study, this is very concerning. A breaking study identifies eighty-six serious neuropsychiatric safety signals linked to COVID-nineteen vaccinations, including but not limited to dementia, schizophrenia, suicidal and homicidal thoughts, stroke, psychosis, depression, cognitive impairments, delusions, and more. What do you think people that took that shot are going to start wondering? And acting out? Can you blame them? How about the family members? Breaking Minnesota Files, this is the State of Minnesota Files bill, HF three-two-one-nine, to designate mRNA injections as biological weapons of mass destruction. It's no longer a game. You got took. And the sad fact is, many people are going to pay the price. Now, New California is going to have a town hall. I just gave this to you. I'm once again inviting you, not so you can be attacked, but so we can find ways to get us through this. This is humanity that's at stake right now. That gentleman that wrote this book that came and spoke so eloquently, he will be my, um, one of my keynote speakers, as well as another person I'm trying to get more. And we will have resources of information so that you can start negating the damages that have the potential of causing harm to you and your family members. So I invite you, I invite you, I invite you to join us because it's happening. We're right in the Constitution. It's just a matter of time. Thank you very much.
Morning.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Pedro Mendez. I am the Associate Vice President for San Joaquin Delta College. On behalf of Delta College, we'd like to provide a public, I guess, announcement or that we will be planning a Board of Trustees meeting on May sixth at five-thirty. That's Tuesday. Um, here in your community. And I think it's here in Dillsaw. And so we'd like to invite the community and all of you to participate. San Joaquin Delta College and the board has been very active in trying to rotate their meetings across the large district area that they serve.
Great. Thank you very much.
Will. Thank you.
Uh, yes. May sixth at five-thirty.
Mr. Budner.
My name is Christopher Budner, publisher of calaveras2026election.com. As the direct result of a diligent private investigation, four of you, Hubbard, E. Follendorf, Tofanelli, and Stopper, received formal notification from the Enforcement Division of the California Fair Political Practices Commission, FPPC, informing each of you that you were under investigation for multiple violations of the Political Reform Act for your respective failures to file accurate and timely campaign finance forms. Each of you has delegitimized the Calaveras County government and its spending authority by your financial misconduct and your blatant concealment of facts to benefit your respective campaigns for office. You've demonstrated the inability to accurately manage your own campaign finances, yet collectively you control the expenditure of almost four hundred million dollars. Hubbard has already received his warning letter from the FPPC in February twenty-twenty-five, declaring Hubbard as a "statements of economic interests" nonreporter and informing Hubbard of the severe consequences of another investigation and confirmed violation of the Political Reform Act. Three of you, Follendorf, Tofanelli, and Stopper, are in the FPPC Enforcement Division's investigatory pipeline for multiple violations of the Political Reform Act as campaign nonfilers. Two of you, Follendorf and Tofanelli, may expect to receive warning letters in coming months pending completion of the Enforcement Division's investigation. One of you, Stopper, having already received a warning letter in May twenty-nineteen for your violations of the Political Reform Act, may anticipate stern measures, including fines, from the FPPC Enforcement Division. One of you, Follendorf, has yet to publicly account for over eighty-four hundred dollars in labor union contributions that mysteriously vanished from your twenty-twenty campaign finances directly under your control. Several weeks from now, when the Board of Supervisors votes on the Calaveras County twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six fiscal year budget, it will be faced with an ethical conundrum. Does this board admit complicity to its citizens for its intentional failure to ensure the accuracy of the four-year agreement for the promotion of tourism with the Calaveras Visitors Bureau and for intentional perpetuation of the fraudulent misrepresentation of the CBB's nonprofit type? Or does it continue to deny the facts known to the board since August twenty-twenty-three? Either way, another formal FPPC complaint is being prepared against Hubbard for his blatant conflicts of interests in this matter. I urge Supervisor Hubbard to resign immediately as the Executive Director of the Calaveras Visitors Bureau. My name is Christopher Budner, publisher of calaveras2026election.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gatche.
Good morning, honorable supervisors. Morgan Gatche with Habitat for Humanity Calaveras. And I actually wanted to thank each of you for what you do in your districts and how much you give back. I know a lot of it isn't necessarily represented here in this room. And so I just wanted to add that as a little side note. That being said, Habitat for Humanity Calaveras is busy doing right now. And so busy doing that I'm forgetting to also tell. And so I'm just taking a moment to share with you guys what is going on across the county right now in each of your districts. Um, in case you didn't see or notice, we have moved massive amounts of dirt in Angels Camp at our development, Eureka Oaks. Um, it is a construction of a hundred and seven affordable homes. And it's pretty exciting. So if each of you, any of you, at any time would like to come get a tour, I'd love to take you out to see what's happening. It's significant, and I'm not just saying that for the county of Calaveras, but this is actually Habitat California's largest homeownership project in its history. And it's here in Calaveras County. So it's a very big deal. And I hope it brings you all an immense pride because each of your constituents are going to be impacted, even though it's in a different jurisdiction. Um, but that's not all we're doing. The Critical Home Repair Program that Habitat for Humanity has done has been here since its inception in nineteen ninety-four. We've done hundreds of critical home repairs. And most recently, this year, in Valley Springs, San Andreas, in Camp Connell and Angels Camp. And significant impacts to our community. Also, I will share that we have a neighborhood revitalization program. In case you didn't remember, you guys did sign the MOU with us. We have five projects that we've done across the county, starting with the Moke Hill Library Deck. We did the Mountain Ranch Ballpark, also the Railroad Flats Community Center. And next week, on April twenty-eighth, for National Volunteer Week, we're actually doing improvements at the airport in time for Airport Days. So if any of you would like to be involved, we invite you to come as well. So just wanted to share that, but I hope I can connect with each of you individually to give you a tour or show you more. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Morgan. Do we have any other public comment? With that, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda.
Consent Agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request the removal of an item from the Consent Agenda for later discussion.
Would any member of the board like to remove any of the items?
Um, here. Number nine.
Mine? Any others? Adam CEO?
Chair Hubbard, we would like to remove item eleven and not have it considered today at all.
Thank you. Would any member of the public like to pull an item?
Hi. Actually, Public Works would like to pull item number twenty-eight from the agenda and have it brought forward at a future date. We have yet to receive word from Caltrans that the project is funded. So until we receive that confirmation, we're going to defer this item.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any other members of the public want to pull an item? With that, I'll bring it back to the board. Looking for a motion for the rest of the items.
I'll move the rest of the items. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, would you read item number nine, please?
Item nine, Agreement Administrative Office Authorized Board Chair to Sign Amendment Zero-One to the Blue Mountain Community Renewal Council Lease to Increase to Square Footage Carved Out From the Lease for Dedicated County Use and to Increase the County's Monthly Contribution for Utilities Related to the Additional Space from two hundred and fifty dollars per month to five hundred dollars per month.
Thank you. Adam CEO, do you want to speak to this?
So this item is because, sorry, are I saying?
Sorry about that. Chairman Hubbard, this item is because we are expanding our presence at the Railroad Flat Community Center. So currently, we have a sheriff's, a sheriff's substation up there, but it's my understanding that we are now adding some activities from Human Services at this location. And in order to offset the cost to the community center for their utilities and also their maintenance and those types of costs that they actually incur as a result of operating the facility, we would like to amend the contract to include those costs as part of our agreement.
So it's an increase of two hundred and fifty dollars and it's not for rent? It's for maintenance and utilities?
Correct.
Supervisor Stopper?
Yeah, I pulled this item. Maintenance, and I had understood on that that it was expansion on utilities. With that, we own the building. We lease it out for a dollar a year. Um, you know. In general, we do the maintenance. So when we're paying more to them for us to do the maintenance, I mean, I just... When I, when I own something and I lease it out for a dollar and then I pay more than that dollar month in and month out to maintain something that I maintain, that's just not a good business model in my mind.
That's all. Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, so currently, the utilities at the Railroad Flat Community Center are averaging around fourteen hundred dollars a month. They do have a number of small sections that they lease out due to the nature of the Sheriff's Department Volunteer Substation and the HHS outpost. They are both confidential in nature. They cannot share a space. Um, there's also a preschool operating, so that takes up the space. So what BM CRC is doing is just trying to make their utilities, they're limited right now, and what all they can do with the large building under repair. So the hope is, once that is up online, that will be their big income generating and they can offset their cost a bit. But right now, you know, their utilities are surpassing their income.
Are there any other board comments? Is there any public comment regarding this item?
Regarding Railroad Flat?
No.
No, this is...
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. This is regarding Railroad Flat. Yes, of course.
Well, I'd like to change it up a little bit, Harry. You know, I kind of caught in part of this. There could be good things coming out of that library as far as, um, learning-wise. I'm there and I'm almost... In other words, I'm headed for a big corporation to be a distributor and I'm kind of start communicating them out of that library. It needs to stay up for a while if you can swing it. The money will come in if this, if I end up being distributor for this corporation.
Thank you.
Hang on to it for a while if you can.
Thank you very much.
So you're, well, he's utilizing, he's utilizing the internet and whatnot.
I get that. Thank you. Yeah. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor. Supervisor Huttonelli?
No, I'll hold off. There's a couple other items coming up on the regular agenda that I have some concerns over. We have a substation there by the sheriff. I don't know how often it's manned. I don't know. The other substations like in Valley Springs aren't continuously manned, so I don't know. One of the things that's coming up on the next couple of items on this Railroad Flat is we're going to be spending money for vandalism that occurs there. If there's a sheriff's station there and we're manning it, how is vandalism happening? But that, I'll save that for going forward.
And overall, it's looking at the big picture with the items coming down as part of the reason I pulled this and going into the future. This, the, I think we should pay the utilities to the point that we incur, we incur costs that's more than fair. I, my understanding is, the proposal originally coming from Blue Mountain was significantly more than the utilities. And I just, down the road, I don't see us running out space that we own. That's my point. I'm not, I'm not against us paying our utilities, but the overall costs and part of this here mentions maintenance. We do the maintenance.
That was actually going to be my question. If we do the maintenance, why are we including that in the cost? Or do we? Is that even, I mean, is that a question that that can answer? Are we sending our own maintenance crew out to do the work anyways?
Mr. Munoz?
Good morning. I can speak to that. So per our lease, Blue Mountain is required to do the maintenance on anything under a certain dollar amount. But when the dollar amount exceeds, it's either $2,000 or $2,500 for a single item, then we can step in. And it's up to our discretion whether we're going to repair or do that. But on the day-to-day maintenance, the routine maintenance that's under that dollar amount, they are required to do that.
Thank you, Morgan.
If there's no other comments...
Oh, yeah. If there's no, you know, if there's no other comments with the understanding that it's for the utilities and $500 is more than fair and us paying our utility part, I'll move this item, and I'll save the rest of the discussion for later.
Thank you.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass is 5-0. We'll move on now to our regular agenda. Item number 35, Madam Clerk?
If you don't mind, Chair, I've heard there might be an issue with the sound for folks who are watching remotely. Can we take a, maybe just a five-minute before we do the regular? Thank you.
Let's come back at 10:00.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry. There we go.
There we go.
If you're having issues with the sound, please try YouTube or Zoom, and hopefully this is coming through in closed captioning, so you'll see that. We will move now on to the regular agenda. Item number 35. Adam Clerk, you all right?
Item 35, action item, Administrative Office Authorized a County Executive Officer to Implement a Countywide Hiring Freeze.
So Madam CEO, you'll speak to this?
I will. Good morning, Chair Hubbardey, members of the Board. As you know, we are in the midst of preparation of our 2526 budget, and we are beginning to see revenue trends come in lower than we had originally projected. And as you are aware, we've also been in a very inflationary period over the last few years, so costs are coming in higher. We believe in order to meet our budget requirements for the upcoming year, it's necessary to implement a countywide hiring freeze. We would like to ask for the Board's approval for departments to need to present any hiring requests to our office for evaluation. We do understand that there are some mission-critical positions that will still need to be filled even under a hiring freeze. We do have some guidelines within this Board item, including positions required to meet legal obligations under federal, state, or grant-funded program guidelines, union agreements, or other binding contracts. We would expect to fill those positions. Positions which, if left unfilled, would clearly jeopardize public health and safety. Positions where the department head and the county executive officer jointly agree that the detrimental impact of holding the position vacant outweighs the fiscal benefit. And then also positions where there's a net zero budget impact. So those would be the criteria for actually filling positions that we would be looking for. But we do believe that in order to meet our 2526 budget requirements, that we do need to start with a hiring freeze at this time.
Thank you. Are there any Board comments?
I can appreciate that you're being proactive and staying ahead of the numbers. This is, this is only the beginning, because we're looking at what our revenue is when it comes to taxes and other things. And as we all know, a lot of the federal revenue will be in flux. We're not even sure where that all lies or where it's going to be coming from. Make sure I got this from now, so we won't get notifications. So I can appreciate you being proactive with this now, and it's, operations, it's going to be hard. We just need to be pragmatic in the sense that anything that we, anybody that we can bring in that can either, in the long term, save us money or is a revenue grabber. I don't think that's proper English, but y'all get it. With consideration of those types of positions, should be kept in mind.
Thank you. Any other Board comment? Is there any public comment? Any comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Thank you.
I'll move this item.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass is 5-0. Thank you much, very much, CEO. Move on to item number 36.
Item 36, information item, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, receive a presentation from the Area 12 Agency on Aging, updating the Board on current activities.
Okay, we'll see. You're on. Oh, okay, great. I was looking for a right button. Good morning, Kristin Milhoff, Director of Area 12 Agency on Aging. I'm here this morning just to give you a brief presentation. She told you about our agency, no? It's off. Your mic got turned off, sorry. Push it on, so it'll... Yes, there we go. Okay, start again. Okay, good morning. My name is Kristin Milhoff, Director of Area 12 Agency on Aging, and I am here to give a brief presentation to the Board regarding our agency, an overview of currently what's going on, what occurred back in 2324, just so you can see the investment that you made to our organization and to your community. So let's get going here. I'm not sure if you all know that our agency actually provides services under the Older Americans Act, which was established back in 1965, and it's Title III grants that provide funding for supportive services, transportation, family caregiver support, health, disease prevention, and most notable, Meals on Wheels and our Congregate Nutrition Programs. This is our mission statement. Oh, goodness sakes. Well, not sure where I'm going. I am so sorry. I am used to a mouse, and so I'm struggling here. I am so sorry. I don't know where, I'm not sure where I'm going. Oh, 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 see, I was doing this. Okay, so just, thank you so much for your patience. I appreciate it. Our agency profile, we were established back in 1987 as a joint powers agency. We're responsible for providing funds by request for proposals to community senior service providers in our area. We also advocate for older adults, age 60 and older, in our public service area, which includes Alpine, Amador, Calaveras, and Mariposa Counties. There are 33 Agencies on Aging currently in the state, and there's over 675 nationwide. So there's a AAA that handles every county in the United States. Our key functions are administration, leadership, and advocacy. And I will say, with the recent changes in the federal government, advocacy will be a very large item that we will be dealing with this year. I'm sure some of you heard that there was a leak in the President's Budget Proposal for this upcoming fiscal year, so there are some definite things that we're very concerned about and that we will probably be bringing to our JPA Board and then bringing back to the Calaveras Board of Supervisors for support in the future. Our planning process, we are required to do a needs assessment every four years, and we had actually done one in 2023, '24. And with that, it provides us with a plan of what the communities and the services are needed throughout our public service area and where we actually need to put the funding. And then with that, we do have service contracts, which we issue every four years, and we are just going to be ending our four-year contract in 2026. So come January of 2026, we will be out for requests for proposals for multiple programs in Calaveras County. Currently, we just received from the Department of Finance and the California Department of Aging, the 2025 Senior Plus Population. So as you can see, in Calaveras County, there are 17,657 individuals that are 60-plus. That is actually a reduction from last year of about 900. Not sure if those numbers could be individuals passing away, moving out of the area, or what have you, but there was a reduction. And we did see a reduction in all of our counties of the Senior Plus Population. Spending parameters, the California Department of Aging, who oversees all of our funding, they provide us with our funding amounts and priorities, which are 65% of our funding has to go to access, which is outreach, public information, transportation, and providing information on resources. Then we also provide in-home services such as chore, personal care, and residential repair and legal assistance. We do, our governing board is our joint powers agreement, which was established back in 1987. Membership is made up of one supervisor from each of the participating counties, and Supervisor Hubbardey is a representative. They're responsible for policies, expenditure of funds, administering contracts, adopting our annual budget, and seeking and consider recommendations from our Advisory Council members. Our Advisory Council, we currently have 14 participants representing our four counties, and we have four here in Calaveras County, one of which is Susan, sitting behind me. We do have four vacant spots in Calaveras County, so we would really love to fill those spots. We currently do not have anyone representing District Four, so that would be really beneficial if we could have District Four represented, as well as four more individuals. We really look at our Advisory Council members as the eyes and the ears in the community, kind of the boots on the ground. You know, our rural areas are so spread out that it's really difficult for us to know exactly what's going on in all these small communities. So when they're represented from each of the districts, it's just a way for us to get more information and to disseminate information out into the community.
Is there an age limit on that?
No, there is not.
It can be...
It can be any age.
21, the...
Yes, yes, well, over 18. Over 18, yes, thank you. So some of the programs we provide directly out of our office are our chore programs, which helps to do some just basic light chore work outside, some weed eating, leave cleanup around the property. We cannot do fire clearance. We get a lot of phone calls for that, but we do refer out to the Fire Safety Councils and other local community groups that might be doing that. Sometimes chore can also be during snow times, as Martin well knows, that a lot of people need to have that snow removal. So we do reach out and work with other community-based organizations and try to get that done for them. Homemaker, providing very light support in the home and personal care. We see a lot of this when individuals get released from the hospital and they don't have anyone in the home to support them, just on a brief periodic basis. So that's when these programs can come into play. As well as someone that is applying for in-home supportive services, sometimes it takes a while for those application processes to go through, so we can work with Health and Human Services to kind of do some interim support while they get qualified for those programs. Residential repair, provide minor home repairs, such as grab bars, repairing some deck railings, some steps, things like that, very minor home repairs. We cannot do roofs or very, very large items, but sometimes they're just enough to help someone be, get in and out of their home safely. Disaster preparedness, we work with OES in all of our communities and try to attend any outreach events and provide education materials. Legal services, we currently work with Interfaith Legal. They're actually in Topeka County, but they will provide legal services free of charge to anyone over the age of 60, and they can do that a lot of times over the phone, or individuals that can get to their location in Sonora are welcome to come. We also provide nutrition education at our congregant sites and our home-delivered meal clients, letting them know of the different ways that they can get healthy meals and different information on their health. Family Caregiver Support Program, we provide services to caregivers caring for an individual over the age of 60 by providing them with support, support group information, access to services. And the one that we see the most is that that caregiver needs to have respite, someone that can come into the home, care for their loved ones so they can attend church, they can go to their own medical appointments, go out to a movie, have lunch with a friend. It's so important for caregivers to avoid burnout. So we contract with licensed businesses that provide that home care and send someone into the home for usually about four hours a couple of times a month. Based, it's actually based on the caregiver's needs. And then we also have relative, older relative raising grandchildren, and we do provide support services, support groups for grandparents raising grandchildren, and that's... And that's, most of the counties are already offering programs, so we try to avoid duplication of services. But we do have a grandparent raising grandchildren support group that they can attend virtually or in person. We have health programs such as yoga, Pilates. Here in Calaveras County, we contract with, oh my goodness, Good Karma Yoga Studio up in Murphy's area. And she provides the services at her business and as well virtually. So, individuals that aren't comfortable with getting out or they don't live close to Murphy's, they can attend anywhere in Calaveras County, virtually. Aging in Place, this program used to be called Fall Prevention. That funding went away, and this funding took its place. It basically addresses the needs of aging adults to review items such as needing grab bars, handrails, various other things so that they can age in place with dignity and safety items. This is a temporary program, it will be going away in 2026. So, our, kind of our minor home repair program and this mirror each other. So, once this funding is done, then that minor home repair program will still be in place to provide services. Aging and Disability Resource Connection, the acronym is the A D R C program. It provides resources and services to individuals, similar to our Information and Assistance Program. But this program also provides more of hands-on and support and training for individuals, learning how to stay in their home and aging. We also offer an online resource directory. We currently have a kiosk located at the Calaveras Library that individuals can go into. It's like a very large TV, it's touchscreen. All of the resources, they can touch Calaveras County, type in food resource, and all the food resources for Calaveras County will show up, as well as any other resources within our public service area. We also provide a printer, and individuals can print out that material for themselves to take home if they so choose, or they can also call our agency and our staff can assist them. Information and Assistance, we have four trained staff that provide a comprehensive assessment on the phone, and they can provide them with state and local resources, and then also follow up to make sure any referrals that we provided them met their needs. If not, then we'll continue to try until we can find the correct resource for them. Health Insurance Counseling and Advocacy, I'm sure everyone has heard of the High Cap Program. Our three staff and 10 High Cap Volunteer Counselors assist individual with Medicare. Those are going to be eligible for Medicare or already on Medicare, helping find the right plans for them. Most notably, open enrollment is always in October through December, helping individuals find prescription drug plans. We actually served in, currently, this year, we've served 155 Calaveras County residents and have saved them $78,000 in costs that they would normally, that they could have incurred if they had the wrong program. Multi-Senior Service Program, this is for individuals over 65 that are at risk of going into long-term care. We can provide them with assistance, with nutritional supplements, with care management to ensure that they are able to remain at home, independent. We work with in-home supportive services and their care managers to allow them to age in place. Currently in Calaveras County, our providers are Sierra Senior Providers. They are out of Toowalemie County, and they provide congregate dining one day a week at the Murphy Senior Center. We also contract with the Amador County Senior Citizens Organization for the Home Delivered Meals Program here in Calaveras. Currently, our agency is providing transportation vouchers with Cal Connect for transportation. And we also contract with Catholic Charities for Ombudsman and Elder Abuse. So, here is your Calaveras County investment for 23, '24. The match that was provided for that year was $99,989. As you can see, we provided Calaveras County residents with $579,000 worth of services. So, for every match dollar provided, residents received about $5.80 in services. So, that's a really good return on investment. And just a summary, aging is something we all experience. To age with dignity and to have the freedom of choice, to be empowered, to positively impact our own aging process are values that I know that we all support. And with that, does anyone have any questions?
Or comments?
Or comments?
Questions?
Just thank you for being here and going through the programs. We really do appreciate everything that the organization does.
Sure, thank you, I really appreciate that. I know it was really quick and fast, but I know you guys are really busy. So, please feel free to reach out to me at any time and ask me questions, or if you have constituents that call you with questions about services, please, you know, email me and I'll be happy to reach out to them.
Supervisor Stopper?
We like quick and to the point, it's honest. And also, just, again, I would like to reiterate what Ms. Follendorf said. You know, thank you for all the work you do. And I really appreciate you as a JPA coming in front of us and letting us know what type of services you do for our residents in Calaveras County. It's much appreciated.
Great, thank you.
It's transparent.
Thank you.
Supervisor Topnelli?
Well, just thanks for being here and thank you for your presentation.
Sure.
And keep an eye on Martin when you're at a meeting.
Thank you, I appreciate knowing what all your services are.
Sure, and just one last comment. Like I said earlier, we will be going for a request for proposal starting in 2026. I have already reached out to Cal Connect and regarding transportation, RFP. We will be continuously trying to reach out into the community so that we can get Calaveras County organizations to possibly bid on services so that we're not pulling them from outside counties, that they're actual Calaveras organization providing the services. So, I will work with Martin and with the Board and really trying to try and gather more organizations to provide services locally.
I'd just like to add, thank you. It's a joy working with you. It's amazing how much I've learned working with you. I hate to think that I'm actually in this category. I keep thinking, like, but this is stuff you gotta think about. And I also really want to say thank you for the shuffle that you had to do when Common Grounds went away and how quickly and you worked, and there wasn't a blip in the service. So, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Is there any public comment regarding this item? Okay, with that, it's an informational item, thank you so much.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. You guys have a great day.
Okay, we'll move on to item number 37. Adam Clerk?
Item 37, action item, Administrative Office authorized a purchasing agent to, one, execute Contract Change Order 02 to Contract 10402419 with Hearth Roofing for the railroad flat exterior building repair in the amount of $108,308. And, two, authorize a budget transfer in the amount of $55,221, requiring a forfeit vote of the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Minios.
Good morning, Chair, members of the Board. Today, I am here looking for approval for a change order in the amount of $108,308 and a budget transfer in the amount of $55,721 to cover that change order. Just for clarity, the amounts are different because the appropriations that were adopted at, adopted budget were $120,000, which was above what the bid came in for the actual project. So, on October 11th, 2024, Administration released a bid. That bid closed in, I believe it was the end of October. Our contracted amount at that time was for $67,000. That was the low bid on the project. We also received a second one, which was at $117,000, and we went with the low bid. The project consisted of removing dry, damage-exposed cantilever glued lamb beans at the north and south elevations of the building and removing architectural beams at the same location to eliminate existing hazardous conditions. As we were moving through the project, it was discovered from the contracted removal, underneath it was discovered extensive dry rot in those areas exposed by the contractor. And so, at that time, a change order was requested in the amount of $12,000, basically for demolition investigation of how much dry rot there was, what, how big was the issue. So, at that time, I approved the $12,000 change order in order to determine what the amount was gonna be, to bring back to the Board, to figure that out. Well, from there, it snowballed as we removed. More and more dry rot was determined to be there. And we basically opened up from one control joint to another control. I'm not too technical on this, I do have the Facilities Project Manager with me that can get more into the specifics of everything. But with that, then we were stuck in the situation of securing the building to come back to the Board. So, in order to secure the building, because the building has experienced some vandalism, we moved forward to get it to that point. So, today's change order for this item is to make the contractor whole, and that's the $108,000 change order, which requires the budget transfer of $55,000. The next item will be to complete the project.
Do we have Board comments? Supervisor Follendorf?
What if it's been five years? And I know many of you were not here at that time with staff, so this isn't directed to you personally or individually, but overall. It was, I asked the question publicly, it was asked by various Board members publicly, what was the damage in this building? We asked staff to go out and talk to the school district because there was, including that there was more damage than what was proposed and what was being sold to us. And now, here we are, five years later, with more damage than what was told to us and sold to get support behind this. And so, I'm really concerned after asking over and over again. And at that time, and I personally feel like I was ignored of the questions I even asked of what, there was a reason why the school gave this up and they weren't continuing the maintenance on this. And we were, we were told by staff at that time that there wasn't this big of an issue. So, I, we're now in a corner, but I'm really, really concerned about where we have gone five years later on this. I understand the investment of this within that community and having this part of county, as a community, countywide, and having a center, but this was not what I signed up for. I don't think any of us signed up for it. And this, when we came out of Top 68 Funds, and I think we should have been looking at Top 68 Funds a couple of years ago, we're now going forward to mitigate some of this. And so, I guess my next question is, if we roll this out out of General Fund or the, or go to zero on Hugs and Rec Fund, are we going after Top 68 Fund to replenish this? Because now, this is gonna put all of us with the current budget crisis we have, none of us are gonna be able to move forward, and everything's on the standstill. So, sorry, I am, it is not to humor, it is, what I was told and was committed and promised at that time, and I know many of you staff, you know, from maintenance to administration were not there, that this would be solid. It is not looking solid to me. It looks like we're doing, we might as well build a whole new building. That's all right.
Supervisor Stopper?
Well, you know, Ms. Follendorf put it, we asked, all of us asked many questions. She has a phenomenal point. I was there at the school board meetings even prior to being a supervisor. They, the former administration at the school district had put off repairs, I can't say for how long. You know. Salaries and everything, budget crisis for them at the time. I mean, they got a deal and they pretty much gave this away to us because the cost, the cost to get it anywhere else legally would, at that time, would have surpassed what we're, where we're at now and what we're gonna have to get to in the future. And I knew that they had not relayed the full potential of what the issues were because they had talked about it during their board meetings, as they continued to kick down the can down the road. Now, I think, me personally, and I believe some of the other Board members, to a certain degree, supported this at the time because of Row Road Flat and the community and us supporting Calaveras as a whole and not wanting a community to be more repressed. So, I'm gonna get to, my point is, you know, you hear me do my song and dance, or, you know, my complaint about what's not done in my district. And the point is, you know, I could even be happy with a regional park in District One that my people can easily access where they don't have to drive up to Row Road Flat because what, 45 minutes from where I'm at. And I grew up in that area, you know, and so I have a heart for the community there. But as we move forward, I need to start thinking about not just repressed communities, because in my mind, my community is repressed because we don't get these type of services from the county. I wanna start thinking about how each dollar can touch more people because we aren't touching that many people up in Row Road Flat. And these are all people I grew up with and care about, you know? That's beside the point. If we did something like this and we, like, if we bought the old school on Jenny Lynn, which, you know, probably should have been torn down at the time, you know? I could have touched 3,000 developed properties within there. There isn't that many developed properties anywhere near Row Road Flat. I would have stretched dollars way farther per individual, and I could have serviced a lot more people in Calaveras County. It's not about, well, it is about where it's at because I can't touch as many people. And I do have a heart for a community that has lost so much over decades as things have changed in our rural county. But I need to start thinking about the whole and how I can help more people as we move forward. And I don't see these dollars helping in that sense. And I do kind of have a problem us being over budget already and us having to pay the money back because we're already there. I don't even get to make a choice on it. What are we gonna end up having to pay more later because we didn't pay the contractor and they have to come after us, and then we have to pay for the lawyer fees? I mean, at this point, when we start opening a can of worms and we start seeing stuff come down the pike, and this is, I think we should be more proactive coming back to this Board and seeing if that's the route the Board wants to go instead of us moonwalking it, because we're already past that point. And we aren't touching enough people in Calaveras County.
Thank you. Supervisor Topnelli?
Supervisor Stopper and Supervisor Follendorf kind of touched on some of the things I wanted to say. But I have an issue with this because of the fact, are we setting the precedents here? Did wagon trail set the precedents to where we can spend money over what, a lot of funds, before we come to the Board? This is what's happening, and what are they gonna say? They have to do it. Ben's exactly right, what are we gonna do? We have to agree to it. The money was spent not one time during the time that was being constructed. Did anybody come to a Board meeting and say, "Hey, we have an issue at Row Road Flat, we need to address with the Board. We had somewhat of an emergency, we didn't want to shut it down, we went forward, here's what's happening, here's our estimated cost." Nowhere until it's completely now done, and we're coming back to the Board to say, "Hey, you know what, we need $108,000, and we already spent it." I'm afraid of setting the precedents here on that going forward and any other projects. It's just, okay, well, they did it for Row Road Flat, we can just keep going here and we'll come back to them and tell them they owe us this money. It's just, even if it was, we had all this dry rot and all this... It's just, even, even if it was, we had all this dry rot and all this, 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 this issues with the building itself. If, if it was a regular building in the public, it probably would have got red tagged and shut down and people told to evacuate from it until it was fixed completely and allowed structurally to go back into the building. Here, we just kept working and letting people stay in there. I don't know what kind of things you're exposed to, whether it's danger. You read this narrative here and it says, that's why we didn't shut it down going forward. I, I, I just, I have just a lot of issues on what happened here and, and worried about, we can't continue to do this. If we have an issue, then we need to have it brought to the board immediately just like OES does when we have some disasters. They come every meeting. They bring us up to date immediately right after disaster. They come forward to us and keep us up to date. Didn't happen here. We had no idea until you come forward right now wanting $108,000. The other thing is, I'm going to touch base on, again, I had a conversation with you yesterday, Marcos, about what I brought up at our last meeting on a building we spent $6 million on. We spent a dollar on this building and well over $600,000. And a lot of that, most of that's general fund dollars. We never did a roof inspection. And a roof inspection isn't just walking on top of the roof and looking at it. It's crawling up and looking. And I'm sure a lot of that damage would have been exposed and looked at. The whole idea was, well, we're going to get a grant and fix it. Well, the grant didn't cover what was needed to be fixed because we didn't do a roof inspection. And I think, I just hope this $6 million building doesn't have the same issues that we voted on last meeting to buy because that's a 25-year-old roof there. This was an old roof here too. So I, I have some major concerns about that. Again, going forward, if we're going to have any purchase of building, and I hope the board's with me on this, that we do a complete roof inspection on it. Not just a, a structural, because that's not going to expose a lot of things other than you need to go up and underneath and look and see what's going on. And if you have to expose some things, that's, that's before you enter it because a $1 building, we're, we're $600, something thousand now and it could be more. There's two other buildings on that property that I don't think we've touched yet that I don't, it needs to come to us before we touch it going forward. And then the other thing I want to request is if board approves this and the next one, the next change order that's coming up after this, before we, after we spend that money, before we spend any money, I don't care if it's within the limits of admin or not, before we spend any money, whether it's a dollar or $50,000, it comes to the board for our approval. And not just, okay, it's under the cap. I, I, I think we need to keep an eye on this thing and where it's at and, and just not allowing a $50,000 here, $40,000. And next thing you know, it's coming and we're up to another $200,000 on this thing and the board has no idea. We need to be kept aware of it just because of the situation this year. Those are my comments.
So Chairman Huberty, I'd like to respond to Supervisor Toffenelli. Your message is received loud and clear. And we will bring any additional work or changes on this project or any future projects back to the board prior to moving forward.
Thank you.
Yes, Supervisor Stopper?
The additional costs are for closing up and making it so that they can wait for us to start talking about what they need to move forward on the rest of the work still, right? Because they aren't done.
They are not done.
I think it's not going to be done. But, no, no, that's, but, 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 right, right. I just, it's been a while and some of the stuff's renamed. So if the District Two supervisors kind of like me, the community center is the old gym?
The old gym and the old office.
Okay. The old gym and the old office. The school wasn't allowing kids in the old gym before they closed down. So, I mean, it was hit and miss. I mean, I don't know, maybe...
It was fully operational and functional before it closed at face.
I was, I was at some of the meetings when they talked about closing it down because it wasn't safe. So you know what? They put the kid in that situation and it was fully operational. Yeah, okay. They want the kids underneath it. They knew what the problems were there. I'm just saying.
Supervisor Follender?
I mean, I guess this is, question goes for both. For the next item too. This, the Prop 68 money that we've gone into putting in and now the money that will be taken out of POCs and RUC, what is going to be our true return on investment from economic standpoint?
So to clarify on the Prop 68, the Prop 68 can only pay for replacement, cannot pay for repair. So when we had the Prop 68 dollars, there was a list of, I think, 10 items that were originally identified that they wanted to do. When we purchased the building, we reduced that to three items we were looking at. One was a roof replacement, one was the kitchen, and one was the flooring. The flooring was cut out because the kitchen and the roof took all of Prop 68. So as of right now, what's left on Prop 68 is about $900 that we got approval from the state to pay for a sign so we can close out Prop 68. So that is Prop 68.
So the intention of how it was sold to us five years ago, that the kitchen would create the revenue for an economic development, that stream now is gone?
That it can be. They're waiting for, if the building...
It's not painful, so if they get put in...
The kitchen's, the kitchen's in. So the kitchen's in, the roof is on. My understanding is the community group wants this build, exterior building repair is done, that it's operational. That was my understanding.
So the kitchen's not operational until we do the rest?
So.
Sorry, your mic. Sorry.
So I...
Kitchen's not operational until the rest of the exterior work's done?
I, I don't want to speak for Blue Mountain. I don't believe they are currently using the kitchen right now, but I don't know when they intend...
I can speak for them, Marcos.
So then how are we going to recuperate that money from the kitchen and revenue? I guess the point is, how are we going to recuperate the revenue stream of that? Or is it all going to Blue Mountain?
We leased the building to Blue Mountain. They're the ones that generate the fees and it goes...
Okay, then we need to reconsider this lease because I'm not pulling more and more money in.
I agree. And, and nobody from Blue Mountain's even here to answer your question?
I, I can speak on their behalf. I've been briefed by them. Their intention is to, yes, use the kitchen to rent it out as a commercial kitchen. There's entities with like cottage licenses. They also have acquired gym equipment from the Valley Springs Gym when it closed. Their intention there is to have a key-coded gym available. They've already had that go through their board and through their insurance. They cannot start with half of the building tarp. It's a liability. But the kitchen is ready, the gym equipment is ready. Their projection is hopeful of $2,000 a month on income to be more self-sustainable. That's their goals, that's their projection. But no, they can't begin with the building literally tarp, as you can see on Slide 792, 791. The community is very responsive to it and plans to utilize those services. They're operating a preschool there today, which is why a lot of them are not here.
Supervisor Stopper?
So they intend to be more self-sustainable off of the gym and they'll pull in revenue when they're also asking that, I believe the original intent asked was that we pay rent for the area on top of the utilities. And what they're...
Separate from this building that's over in the office.
That's, that's, that's the whole Railroad Flat. It's, all those buildings are together, right?
Well, currently, there's no leasing of, subleasing of the gym. That would just be BM CRC. The little office building is set up into subleases. Currently with the sheriffs, currently with HHS.
Supervisor Follender? Could you tell me how many people actually, I don't remember the numbers of the community members that actually use this building?
So what you need to understand with Railroad Flat is that it's also pulling Glencoe. It's pulling Willsville. It's pulling West Point, Mountain Ranch, Chief Ranch. So, you know, it's, it's like the people of Dorrington and Camp Connell come down and shop in Arnold, right? It's not just Railroad Flat. It's that whole greater District Two area. There's even some moms that come up from Oak Hill for the preschool. So it's serving a lot. And when you mentioned, you know, driving 45 minutes, that's what we do up country. We're used to it. We don't mind driving. So Railroad Flat Community Center is pulling from many different areas within that half-hour radius. The preschool, they told me the other day, is serving on average of 15 to 25 kids when they're open.
You mean income from that?
Yes. They're, they're leasing it. The preschool group is leasing from BM CRC.
I have 15 to 25 kids within a quarter of a house. I have 15 to 25 kids in less than a quarter of a mile of my house.
I'm sure first five would help you get a playgroup up and going.
Is there any public comment regarding this issue or item? Seeing none? Is there any online?
We have no online public comment for this item.
I'll bring it back to the board.
I'm going to move this item because we don't have a choice. It'll cost us more if we don't pay. I just, again, going forward, I don't want to set a precedence here a year from now, two years going forward, that it's okay to do this and not come to the board and let us know.
I'll, I'll second it. I said it earlier. We're already, we're already in the work. I appreciate all of that from your side. But, but at that point, we're tarped off. And anything moving forward from there is going to be another bid coming down the pike, is my understanding, right? Yes. Right now, we're paid up to tarped off.
And again, part of my motion is that any money spent at all, period, $10, comes before the board. So we're aware of what's going on in this project. That's part of my motion.
So I have a motion and a second. Do you want to...
I mean, we're stuck in a corner and I hope, at least right now, in this moment in time, because we've got another item coming up on the agenda, I do not see POCs and RUC getting funded this year if this is the way, way this is going to go. And we are, we are throwing money, it is bleeding us dry. And so now we are at a disadvantage when we had massive momentum with the POCs and RUC, with adopting the master plan, and now we have nothing to show for it. And so what does that show to us as leadership? Quite frankly, this is embarrassing. I mean, I'm, I'm embarrassed that this is where I have to be placed, where I've got a pro, a project in front of me that I have nowhere to move. And if it was anything else, and this was at the beginning, and which I should have done five years ago, the vote should have been no. But here we are today, and I will stand by the rest of us because we've got to follow through and show that leadership. But this is embarrassing, especially coming up in budget season. I, I cannot even, I don't even know what I'm going to say to my constituents. When I have to tell them on the next item for POCs and RUC, I cannot deliver what I've been working on for years with this board.
Totally agree.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Follender. With that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Can we hold just one moment before we go to the next item?
Yes. Take a five-minute break?
No, just a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Everybody agrees.
Item 38. Action item, administrative office authorized a purchasing agent to M1 execute contract change order 03 to contract 10402419 with Barth Roofing for the Railroad Flat exterior building repair in the amount of $110,253. And to authorize a budget transfer in the amount of $143,753. Requires a forfeit vote of the board.
All right. And this is the second part of the building. So this is to take it from where we are currently at through completion. So it's the second half of the original contract as well as the change order.
Board comments? Supervisor Stopper?
I'm just saying, no sense in kicking a dead horse right now. So my question is this, that this is before us to finish the building off as it exists right now. Has, has everything been exposed? Has everything on this building, we're not going to run into another item? Oh, we missed this. Has, has we gone out there? Have we looked at the building? Have we inspected the building? Have we decided this is what needs to be done? And that this amount will cover what we need? And we're not going to run into some more dry rot at the bottom of the building that we didn't see before?
If you, if you don't mind, I'm going to call Kevin up. He's been out there. He's, he's inspected it. He knows more detail of everything.
We appreciate that.
Thank you, Kevin.
Morning.
Morning, Kevin.
We believe that we're at a point where we have everything exposed and no further dry rot has been noted. That's how we were able to get that hard number for this change order that we're requesting now. And that would complete what's left of the original contract work as well as finishing up all the additional work that now needs to take place because of those drywall repairs or dry rot repairs that we already did with the beams and whatnot. We did find some underground termite stuff that we have to address, but it's very minimal. We've already had that inspected. We already have the inspections done by the structural engineers as well as architect. They're the ones that came up with the formal plans for the retrofitting of the glue lamp beams. And so, yes, we're at a point now where we've opened it up, everything to do the project where there's no further, as far as we have been told. I have gone up there and looked at it. You know, it was a can of worms. That started out very small, but...
So this, this includes exterior stucco or whatever the exterior is on the building? Insulation, drywall, finishing off the inside after there's drywall? Structural retrofit.
Yes.
To bring it up to today's code.
Yeah.
Well, that's, yeah.
Fortunately, we had to use...
Structural retrofit. So, and what about flooring? Have we just replaced flooring that had to be torn out?
We have not gotten to any flooring in there. We do have to do some drilling into the tiles that are there with injection for some of the underground termite work that needs to get done, but they're very small and they just fill them back up with putty. So it's kind of a cosmetic thing. But as far as the interior grows, the interior hasn't been affected that much. We did have to do some potholing all over the place to kind of see, you know, more investigative to see, you know, how far that went into the building in terms of the glue lamp beams. And those glue lamp beams on this particular building, they're what hold up the entire roof. And as soon as we found out that those, that rot kind of continues in past the exterior, it was like, okay, stop. You know, now we need to have an official, you know, something stamped that says, hey, this is what you can do or cannot do, and it's not just up to me, you're up to the contractor to make a decision about, you know, what has to get done.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
Supervisor Stopper?
I'm just...
I'm just going over these numbers, because we're... I'm just...
It adds up to wipe out the parks and recs.
Yeah.
Let's go.
At this point, we haven't done this work, right?
That's why I was asking, is it gonna cover?
Oh, it never does.
Supervisor Randall?
I understand completely all of your points and the position you're in, and I'm coming in late on this. And like you've all said, we're backed into a corner. The building is literally tarped facing a county road. I do have all the faith in this nonprofit group to hold up their end and keep it productive and make it, you know, stand alone at some point in time. So I do appreciate the consideration, and it is my understanding that Prop sixty-eight will roll again. And I want you all to know that I'm committed to your districts and your park projects one hundred percent behind that.
Yeah, I don't see Prop sixty-eight any time in the near future with the state.
And we've gotta do matching funds.
Yeah.
Do we have by any chance, or can we get, if you don't have, can you please give us at some point what the estimated annual maintenance cost of this building is? So we have some idea annually what it could cost us?
That's a stretch.
And I think that, no, I think to Gay's point, I think I asked that at the last meeting. I think at this point, this is honestly getting ridiculous. We need to get what that maintenance looks like for parks before we even build or do anything. We don't even know what our existing cost is. And if we're renting this, renting stuff out, then we need to reevaluate these contracts. Because as much as the community seems to rely on us, they cannot continue to rely on government. We do not have a money tree, and we talk about how much we hate government, yet we're sitting here bleeding and depreciating entire budgets on this, because no one seems to think this. It's just ridiculous.
Well, to answer your question, the maintenance cost is two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. Because ultimately, that's what it is, it's just deferred maintenance that we're paying for right now. It's over the two hundred.
It's over two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. But, yeah, deferred maintenance is that key crucial, crucial words right there.
I mean, how do we stand up to the taxpayers on this?
How do we? I have one other question, since we're leasing this out to Blue Mountain. And the contract we have with them, are they responsible for the insurance? If somebody gets hurt there, is the county on the line for that? Or does their contract say they have to maintain a certain two hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars worth of insurance? And protect naming us?
They do, they do maintain their insurance, they name us as additionally insured, their insurance.
And we keep track of that, whether they're...
We do, and we follow up annually when it expires to make sure to get it.
Okay, well, that's, at least we're doing that correct. We're not on the line if something happens. Somebody uses the kitchen and they get per whatever, okay.
Is there any public comment on this item? Any comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the board.
Like I said, this is where we're at, it's a building that we own, it's tarped off to the public. You know, I don't see how we could possibly leave it that way. It will, it's a liability to us to have it in that state, it's a matter of time with the weather up there.
So you make, is that a motion?
I'm making a motion, too.
Make a motion, and I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. I'll move on now to our informational item, number thirty-nine. Madam Clerk?
Item thirty-nine, informational item Public Works, receive a presentation on the draft twenty twenty-five Calaveras County Department of Public Works' five-year capital improvement program and give direction.
Thank you, do you need time to set up?
It's on the...
It's on the, okay.
Okay, good morning, Board Supervisors, this is Micah Martin, your Public Works Director. With me is Kelly Zanasser, our, our... Business Administrator, thank you. Just changed titles, and I'm trying to keep up. And also Robert Patchinger is here in our, in our audience if we need him for questions, our Deputy Director of Public Works and County Surveyor. So before you, today, we have our presentation of our proposed capital improvement program. This is our draft presentation, this is where we like to solicit feedback from the board on the projects that we're proposing to have completed over the next fiscal year, and also any efforts for future projects beyond that term. So the purpose of this presentation also is to discuss our revenue sources, how we fund the CIP. We're also gonna look back at, you know, this presentation's about future, but we also like to take a moment to look back at what has been accomplished. So we'll take a minute to look back at some of the projects we completed on the last cycle. We're also gonna discuss our proposed twenty twenty-five paving program along with other projects scheduled for construction for the next fiscal year. And then we want to talk about how we will be planning for future projects beyond twenty twenty-five. And then at that point, we'll provide an opportunity for input and direction from the board. So first, just to touch really quickly on revenue sources, we do have our discretionary revenue, which is really just HUDA and RSTP. And nearly a hundred percent of that revenue is used for our maintenance efforts. Beyond that, we have our restrictive revenue, where we have project-specific funding that we use, federal grants and state grants. And right now, you know, there's kind of some uncertainty of those grants really being available for future use, so there'll be some consideration being given on future projects on how we will utilize those funds as they become available. We also have our RMRA program, which also includes SB one. And we've talked about that, we've submitted our SB one list for our paving projects, and we'll touch on that again here in the presentation. And then, of course, we have our TOT, which covers our maintenance of effort. So here's just a quick look at some of the completed projects, we have Manji Bridge and Moran Road. And we've also completed the Valley Springs School Safety Improvement Project, Phase One of that. Manji Bridge, the Gateway Monument signs and wayfinding signs throughout the county. We've also completed the high-friction surface treatment in various areas throughout the county, along with thermoplastic striping and our annual traffic striping program. And then with our twenty twenty-four annual road resurfacing and paving. And then lastly, our O'Burns Ferry Road Guard Rail Program. So here's a quick picture of our wayfinding signs that were completed. And then these are projects that were completed under our paving program, which leads to these again. All right, and then, so we want to touch a little bit on informing the board on our decision-making process on how paving projects are chosen. As we talked before, when we submitted our SB one list, we want to take more of a data-driven approach in how we make our selections on what to pave and what takes priority. Typically, we refer to our Calaveras Paving Management Report. That gives us kind of a classification of the condition of our roadways throughout the county. We also rely on our public reporting system, with the public giving us feedback and input as to the conditions of some of the roads in the county, where they may feel that some roads are neglected or need attention. We also get input from our staff, our road superintendent, our road supervisors, our inspection staff. They give us a lot of feedback on the condition of some of the roads and some of the needs that may come up outside of what's already been identified. And then we also, when we get that information, we do field confirmation on this, we go out to the field and we take a look around and try to group stuff together to make something that's worth, you know, pursuing a project on. We want to try to maximize economies of scale when we do that. And then we also rely on consultants to help us with our design work and, you know, putting projects together to go out to bid. So with our proposed priorities for this upcoming fiscal year, you know, we were kind of relying on our most recent CIP. That was the five-year that was created in twenty nineteen. And, you know, with the limited fundings, we kind of want to be strategic with our efforts. So we really want to give primary focus to the higher-volume roads and the roads that are in fair or at-risk shape. And also realizing that it's not realistic to ignore the major problems there, because the longer we put them off, the more expensive they get. Okay, so this is looking at our next pavement list here, that was, that's gonna be submitted for our SB one. We have the Baldwin Street in District Five. And we also have Hartvixen Lane and then Vista Delago Drive to Baldwin Street. So we're gonna try to combine those projects together currently, as you're aware, the Water District is doing some waterline underground work. And we've partnered with them on the paveback of that project. So we'll be doing Hartvixen and Baldwin together this next fiscal year, just to take care of that. And separate from that, you know, we've included, this hasn't always been included in the past, but PRD one in Woodgate, that has its own funding source, but it is a paving program that we do. And there's a lot of, you know, staff time and effort that goes into this. So we'd like the Board of Supervisors to be aware of that activity as well. Even though it's not considered part of the CIP, it is a lot of pavement activity that takes place out there. And we like to make sure everyone has awareness of that. And then we've also, I'm sorry. O'Burns Ferry Road, you know, we've talked previously when we were putting our SB one list together, we're gonna defer that to at least twenty twenty-six, if not further, depending on how funding becomes available for that. And then...
I just, I just, I just want to put on, Micah, you, you know, proceeding forward, you're still getting caught up on some of the history behind some of this. So I think that the bridges and everything right here coming up are gonna be a point of discussion, especially for Mr. Toffinelli and I, because we have some stuff that, I have stuff I want to bring up, I'm sure he does. And I believe that we, as a board, have set priorities in the past. And I think some of these, I mean, you're talking about some of these, you're gonna... I think the boards as a whole may decide to change some of these priorities on some of the bridges.
Understood, yeah. So to start with that, the first two items on here are the two bridges, Dogtown Bridge over French Gulch and Lime Creek Bridge. So these are part of our HBP...
Micah, I don't mean to interrupt you, but can we go back to the previous slide? I had a question and it just kept going.
Yeah.
On the O'Burns Ferry, it says begin locations and end locations, various. Is that because one side of the bridge, you're gonna stop? And I'm unclear how it's one road and you're gonna stop and start in various places.
Maybe it should be to be determined, we have no determinants.
Yeah, maybe it should say to be determined, as opposed to various, because the limits still need to be identified.
You start a bridge, stop, go, stop, I...
You're gonna skip.
We're gonna pay this much and then forget about this much and go this much.
That's some of the original plan in engineering, a lot of the roads in the county were done like that.
We'll definitely take a look at that and make that adjustment. Okay. Yeah, no problem. So back to the twenty twenty-five construction list, Dogtown Bridge over French Gulch and Lime Creek Bridge. Those are part of our HBP program. So there was a grant done years ago where there was federal funds that was made available to rebuild a lot of our bridges throughout the county. And those bridges were identified as part of that grant effort. So these are some of the remaining bridges of that program that we're trying to get wrapped up. And then from there, we have our Bridge Preventative Maintenance Program, that's BPMP. And that's any other bridges outside of this effort that needs reconstruction, it's just more preventative maintenance. And we have a continuous effort annually to do our preventative maintenance on our bridges. We also have the roadside safety audit project, which the board's familiar with. That project's gonna be resuming and hopefully finish up here within this next fiscal year. We also have our Keep Calaveras Clean projects, along with SB one, our RMRA road project for Baldwin Street and Hartvixen. And then we also have the paving projects in PRD one. We also have the O'Burns Ferry Road Guard Rail Project, and then annual traffic striping. And then lastly, we have our twenty twenty-three winter storm projects. These were disaster projects over at Harbor Road, Blank Lane, Gwinmine Road. We had some storm disaster events that had happened there, and we had worked with FEMA on contributing general fund dollars as a match to receive those grant funds. And we're looking to complete those projects in this next fiscal year. Any questions on those? Or do you want to come back?
I think we'll wait until after the...
Okay, we'll come back. Okay. For future projects beyond, you know, this first, this next fiscal year, you know, we want to talk about, again, our strategy and how we're gonna prioritize these projects. We really are in a place now where a lot of the planning documents that we base projects off of are kind of old, outdated, have been used, and we're really in a place where we need to start focusing on planning efforts again and start putting some documents together to help us identify where our needs are at. You know, the best allocation of resources, best funding options available. And, but we also need to solicit the input from the Board of Supervisors and the public. But we also want to focus on future capital projects such as roads with high annual, high annual average daily traffic volumes and roads with safety issues or high accident rates. And that's taking into consideration that our road funding is limited, we only have so much money to go so far. And it's really important we make a good educated decision on how we decide which roads to pave and win. And then we also want to maximize grant opportunities, we want to, you know, partner with the COG and make sure that, you know, we're identifying grants that are more regional and focused for safety projects, complete street projects, and then emergency evacuation projects. And then again, recognizing our partners as we, you know, work through these efforts. The Calaveras Council of Governments is a great partner for us, they help provide funding for bicycle and pedestrian funds, Regional Surface Transportation Program, CMAC. And they also assist us with applying for those grant funds through the grant application process and call of projects. And they also have their active transportation program. So all those programs, all those efforts that come from the COG, help feed our project pipeline and help us develop projects to put into the CIP. And aside from that, we also, you know, capitalize on opportunities to partner with our local utilities, such as the Water District and PG&E. There's oftentimes work that they're gonna do that is an area that we've had our eyes on, that we want to get some paving done. So we'll usually partner with them and do a cost-sharing benefit to get those done. And then, of course, we also partner with Caltrans on cooperative agreements for a lot of different highway projects. So in summary, we're gonna be continuing with our road rehabilitation progress with SB one and the RMA funding. SB one and the RMA funding. And we also want to make sure that we allocate a certain amount of those funds to our maintenance operations as, as we identified before in our previous SB one presentation. And then we have a variety of project types scheduled for construction in 2025 and, and hopefully with a focus on planning efforts for projects beyond that point. So as you see, the CIP as presented today, we're showing projects scheduled and funded for this next fiscal year, but beyond that, our TBD, because we want to make sure we know and understand the direction we need to go in and have a good understanding and grasp as to what funding is available for us. So, you know, we, when we started this effort, we had a senior engineer on our staff who was helping us with that. And my goal and my, my, you know, effort at the time was to bring the full five-year CIP, but being short-staffed, you know, it's, it's been kind of a little bit of a struggle and not having these planning documents, not having the funding identified, it's a little bit more of a task to take on. So we really just focused on this next fiscal year with the commitment to continue to develop the remaining years of the CIP.
I think, I think in this time influx, taking small bites out of it right now might, might be more pragmatic in my mind. I mean, we can prioritize for the years going forward, but that's, that can change. It's in flux.
So at this point, we just want to go ahead and solicit input and direction from the board and we're just looking to see if the board has approved in the current draft or wants us to return back with a revised version.
Do we have any board comments, Supervisor Andal?
Yes, being fully cognizant of where we're at, I just wanted to mention a project I would like to be considered for future, you know, like you said, should funding align with it, have it kind of in the queue. I would love to request a study on Mountain Ranch Road near Rocky Road. Sadly, in January, we lost a first responder on his way to his shift at Central Fire Station. And it's, it's a nasty stretch of road. We have signs, our crews do great sanding it, but it's, it's always there in the middle of winter, it doesn't see sun. And there are guardrails beyond the spot and before it. So I would love to see a study to close that gap and bring in the guardrails right there. Future.
Okay.
We already funded the Safe Street For All, which is actually one of my questions. There was a grant and the county is responsible for it. And not only is it for county roads, it's also for the City of Angels. And we entered into a joint agreement a couple months back to do just that. So one of my questions that I did not see on the CIP is where is that?
It's in the CIP. I'm sorry.
What page was it on? Because I didn't see it. So unless I was looking at the wrong name, but where are we? Because there is a timeline on that funding and we, I understand, Micah, you, we got awarded that money before you came onboard, but we are also, you know, within my district representing the City of Angels and we have not seen any movement on that project. And I know your, your head staffer is no longer with your department, but I think we need to reevaluate that before we lose that funding that we got from the state of California.
Sure, it's on page 15 in the, in the CIP.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But I am worried about the delivery because when the county, when we committed to this and we committed that timeline also to another jurisdiction that this would be done in, I think, less than 18 months, I think we need to relook at that proposal for 18 months because I don't see us completing that, given the challenges that you face right now and everything else you've got going on. I think we need to take a step back, look at that and see if we're actually going to meet those timelines because we have an obligation to our counterpart to provide that same service to them. Because it, because what we decided to do was instead of competing against each other, we went in for one grant to cover both jurisdictions.
It shows an anticipated completion date of 26, 27.
I don't see, we haven't even thought of it.
Well, so one of the items that was on the consent agenda today was to approve the contract with the consultant to begin the work on this project. So that, that was the item 29 on the agenda. So that, that'll get, now that that's been approved, we could enter into that contract and begin work on that effort so that we could hopefully stick to that timeline and meet the requirements.
I just want to make sure, because that wasn't very clear on it, but yeah, it just, I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about it.
Supervisor Stoppa?
Oh, I got multiple things. You, the, the bridges here, I mean, driving District Two, I, I, there are so many bridges up there, but every one of these on here is District Two to the tune of tens of millions of dollars. And, you know, we just fixed a roof there, so I want to start looking at some groundwork over in some other districts. We had some winter storms, 2022, 23, that just ravaged Gary's and my districts, not that any damage wasn't done up in, in other areas by any means, but Costco Creek. And one of the, you know, we're, we're looking around at all these things about how we're going to deal with Costco Creek, but if you're, if you're actually down there during one of these events, the bottlenecks are the bridges. And that's what starts damming up the water. And so these bridges getting replaced here, and I brought this up before, we definitely brought Hogan Dam because during one of those storms, there was a literal hole going through one of the bridges at Hogan, on Hogan Dam Road that we had to ask Public Works to go out and fix because I, you know, I, if one of the towers on my vehicle went through it, it would have been not a good thing. But yeah, they, they, the concrete filled it. And, and so is, in my mind, that's a temp fix. Mr. Toffenelli and I have brought up before, these bridges are something that are a priority to him and I. And they're a part of the solution called Costco Creek during these winter storms as a whole. I mean, you know, the vegetation's one thing. These bridges, when it gets up to that point, are the real dams that hold stuff back. I, I have pictures of some dumpsters and stuff stacked up on, stuck in the last one. It was, it's not funny, but it's quite interesting. St. Andrews, Silver Rapids, Vista Delago, and Hogan Dam Road, four bridges that need to take priority in my mind over what's on there. And you will touch more people. And they're more, they're main thoroughfares for more people than these other bridges, even though they're on larger roads, the other bridges. And I just, and you weren't here, Micah, but I'm just beside myself that they aren't even on here for consideration at all, you know, because we said something. On thermoplastic, you know, I drive out Southworth Road at least once every other Sunday, sometimes more than that for things I have to do out that way. It is in Gary's district. Before, you, you heard Gary during the last meeting saying Southworth Road wasn't finished, you know, to the point of what was written down said what was going to be done. Before it was repaved, it was freshly thermoplasted. And I saw that when they were doing it, they had to remove the thermoplastic that we just put on to repave over it. What was the cost on that? And is that part of the reason he didn't get his whole road paved? So as part of our dig once policy, we worked with CCWD. These are the reasons I've waited for years for my roads, Hartvixen and Baldwin to be paved. They were, they're scheduled, what, five years ago originally? And, you know, the work we do using the taxpayers' dollars one way or another, whether it comes from someplace else, we shouldn't be thermopasting it right before we pave it. That's a loss and we should be pragmatic about how we move forward in that sense.
And we agree with that. And that's actually why we've added it into the CIP because it's something we need to be monitoring more closely and, and more consciously coordinating with. So moving forward, you know, it's, that's going to be part of the effort with our paving is to, to compare both those efforts and make sure they're not contradicting each other or having that overlap.
Going over this, so we, we, we just, you know, Ms. Fulendor brought up the study and the grant money put forward so that, you know, for, for Angels and the county as a whole for safety. Supervisor Andal brought up, you know, she has a concern on Mountain Ranch Road. We set priorities in the past when it comes to safety and which roads as a board we are worried about. And I'm going to bring it up to you now because you haven't been here. Garner and All Ranch Road, All Ranch Road, where they hit Highway 26. Now, that's Highway 26 there is a Caltrans road, but the other two going into it are ours and they are county maintained, even though one side does go through the middle of a CSA, it is a county maintained road. Now, something you're not aware of is there was a developer in, in the day that had money there to actually expand on that. And when Gary was on a four-year hiatus, off the board, they gave that money back to the developer to deal with this. I have accidents there frequently, even if they aren't always reported. More than once, we've been in here talking about safety on roads and setting priorities. And literally the day before, someone on a motorcycle or someone out, someone in a car has been rear-ended or hit. And I know people that have severe injuries that still haunt them from that area. It's not safe, it's blind coming in from both ends. That's a priority that's been set by the board and something that should continue to be on here and not lost on that. And, and in my mind, it's been a priority for this board since 2001, 24 years. And it keeps getting lost, but you're not aware, you're not aware of this, you know. So I'm putting it on your radar, Micah.
Yeah.
So then you can be the one that makes sure it stays there.
No, that's fine.
Also, if the board decides it's not a priority.
Yeah, and it is, it is addressed on page 29 of the, of the CIP.
I missed it.
No, it's okay.
I apologize.
No, it's okay. And, and we are working on it.
It's all wound up about other things. Sometimes I get blind on, you know, like Amanda got wound up early on the consent agenda and missed item 29.
That's okay. And we are, we are working on a cooperative agreement with Caltrans for that project. So there is, there is things happening behind the scenes.
I appreciate that.
It's, it'll take some time. Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, and I got other things on my mind, but I better set, set, set the microphone down because I can go all day. Just the one other thing I do have written down here. We had to make some adjustments. Things were a little lopsided in the way things got distributed. And District Two and District Three, sorry, not sorry, got far more than their share. And I see it's time for us to level the playing field and I don't necessarily see that here. So I just want you to know, I'm cognizant of that. We'll see about the rest of the board and how they feel.
Supervisor Andal?
I would just like to clarify, where is Lime Creek Bridge?
District One.
District One. Okay, so not all the bridges are District Two?
Oh, yeah.
Just to clarify.
My apologies.
And I just want to make sure, I know that we are aware in this room, but the public is aware, District Two is ginormous. It's huge. It's a lot of land, it's a lot of county roads, it's a lot of little communities, just so everybody's aware.
And we'll make everyone aware of Butte Fire money that rightfully got spent in, spent in that area to the tune of millions. And the fact that one of those roads was Jesus Maria, and then we end up spending over a million dollars SB one fund to do money that was already programmed from, from Butte Fire funds in there that wasn't originally prioritized by the board. So yes, you do have a lot of land. I'm trying to touch more people.
And Butte Fire was rough for us to live through.
Yeah, you know what? You got her right.
We're still-
And I still-
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Thank, thank you. I, I, I understand going forward that, that we're going to have very limited funds. We, we don't know what's going to happen with the federal and state. We don't know what's going to happen with grants. They've been pretty prevalent the last several years and we may have missed several items within District One in, which is the Hogan Dam Bridges. I, I, I think, I know there's some repair work being done on them, it's not listed here and has been, but they are major concerns because they are major safety items. They're very narrow bridges. People come from out of the area and pull boats going to Hogan Dam, a boat launch there. There's accidents all, all the time there because of the narrow bridges and, and people just, the way they are and just they're going through anyway and no, they're, it's, they are main concerns that I have. And I'm, I, I'd just like to at least get them on the list. I understand the funding, if we can find some time where there's available grants available for them that, in the future coming up, whether next year, year after, whatever, that we have them on the list because they are a major concern. They're one of the reasons that we have this program to be addressed. I'm not going to go any further into District Two because I know the history on those bridges. Although I think at the time, I did bring up the fact that two of those bridges, I doubt if two cars go across them in a day, maybe in a week. They're just way out, way out there, but they were on the list and funds became available for them. So I'm, I'm aware of that, what's going on with that. The other concern I have also is there's some accidents that happen on some very narrow bridges that don't have any guardrails or anything on them on Burson Road. They are very narrow and accidents happen there or near-miss accidents happen all the time. So if those could possibly get somewhere on the list, at least they're there and we, and we look at it. And then I'm just going to bring up one other item because I know, you know, I'll wait till next year and see where the funding is going on other things. But again, I'm going to bring up Southworth Road and what happened in just stopping right in the middle of it and walking away from it. I really think funds coming forward need to be put forward to finish paving that off to get to Ospatell Road where it comes in and then it goes off to the highway because people use that, like Ben said, people use that area of the road a lot. It, it, and it needs to be repaired because it's in really bad condition. And I think I'll just leave it at that and next year, hopefully there's funding available going forward. We try and finish off the project you have on it, on this year's, and hopefully we can do some other things during the year, maybe just some grant money comes available for those bridges that I brought up, especially the Hogan Dam Bridges coming off the highway there. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Supervisor Holmer?
Yes. Gary brought up the bridges. Dogtown over San Domingo, I know we're currently in right away. Gary and I have been waiting several months for the updated design. Now it was supposed to be accommodating for the property owner to get through right away. I haven't seen that updated consideration of the design. I don't know, I don't think Gary has, but there's some more work that needs to be done. Otherwise, I'll be quite frank, that project's dead in the water. So unless we make these accommodations with this property owner to, to, to solve some of the issues that have been brought up over the last year and a half, I've got concerns. And obviously, this money won't be able to go to any other bridges, it will be given back to the state, but we've still got some work on that. And I'll say it again to staff, the signatures are not coming until they- And I'll say it again to staff, the signatures are not coming until they see results. And the other is, the, Micah, you and I talked about it last night a little bit. As much as I would love with now in the Ben district to see Hunt Road and Rock Creek and those improved as well for, I feel like I'm Mario Coach when I go out there.
We, we, and she, she shares that with me because, you know, I generally look at that as not a general thoroughfare, but you have Copperopolis residents driving to Rock Creek using Hunt Road. And, and it's, it's surprising, like when there's been issues with access through there, there are piles of trash on the side of the road because people just, oh, I can't drop it off the landfill and it falls off. Now in my district, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I do get calls from people out there, so thank you.
So while I want to nitpick all these roads and, you know, we have these roads that really need some love, I think my goal, if you want my feedback going to the future of the CIP, I think we really need to take, pump the brakes and really look at, and you mentioned it, plans. We're not delivering. We have, it's an issue of delivering, and I want to figure out how we can, as a county, maximize our road system for the best grants and projects out there. And sometimes those funding aren't going to be what's number one on the priority list. It may be something else. So while we're looking at this, I think we need to look as a whole, outside of just each of our districts and what we're advocating for consistently, what are, what are county roadway systems that we need to improve, looking at evacuation routes? We've got the evacuation plan we just approved, you know, this year, you know? How can we utilize that with planning? And some of that can even tackle some of the safety issues and vice versa with the safe, this, this safety plan, the safe streets. But I think as much as, and I get it, I mean, I've been, I want it, all my roads paved to perfection as well, but I also have to look at how are we going to move traffic? We've got to figure out from a traffic mitigation, how we're going to move things, you know? How are we pulling it from the state routes onto a local road and maximize those dollars so we can see a bigger project accomplished? But at the end of the day, we have, before I, I ask for most biggest, we obviously have been hitting one in my district for a long time, we're hoping to wrap that up, that it will free up staff time a little bit more. But how can we maximize that, those plans that you're talking about to leverage the dollars out there? Because right now, and we saw it with Valley Springs project, we have no other project in the queue that would qualify us for C-MAC.
This too. Touche.
But I mean, that's, that's an example that we just, we just went through and we got a successful project going. But what out of this project list in front of us do we have that would qualify us for the next round of C-MAC? If we have to, if we're not able to use it on the projects? You know, that's what I also want to look at. I want to look and, I want to see those projects as well. So we're not sitting here having to loan that money out again to Sacramento County, to San Joaquin County, or in quite frankly, having to give it back to the state because we did not have a plan or a project. And I, when I look at this project, I'm not looking to pit it whether it's in District One or District Three, we just need to keep those money, my goal is to keep those money in this county and improve it. So where did that? So for me, that's what I want to work, I want to strive for and look for where we've got our district issues that we need to accomplish, but how do we handle it broadly, broader? So we're not losing out on the C-MAC. How can we leverage? And that's just one, there's more, obviously, as we know, other funding out there. So we can position ourselves to go through, to get those projects completed. Going back to my district though, I am worried about the timeline that is on this list. I know I've said it multiple times with the Auburn Fairway paving. I really, it really makes me nervous. I think that it, I think it is going to cost more than what is projected. And I really want to make sure that staff is having a thoughtful conversation about this as we move forward so we don't end up in the same situation we are now in previous. So I really want to be as proactive on this than reacting and have another road issue in my district again, where we're stumbling on funding situations.
That's a good question.
And then overall, we, the guardrails and the bridge at Auburn. I feel like we're playing whack-a-mole with the guardrails. We have significant accidents on that road. I feel like it's almost every day now. And our guardrail is really the best investment. Is there something that we can, we look at outside of just the guardrails? Because I, I feel like every time we put them back up, they come right back down. And I just, I don't want to keep wasting funds on that. And then looking ahead, we really need to look at replacing the bridge. And I know that is a 20 to 30-year project, but I don't want, you know, it's, it's, yeah. I just want to, I just thinking of these regional larger projects, that at least my district is the next thing. I mean, I don't know why it died, the way it died, with the process it was in with the bridge program, but it did. And I think we need to really look at making sure it's somewhere in the queue with the state of California because, and working with Tuolumne County. Because we've got a situation down there that it's just not going to be pretty, especially if we start seeing more and more logging trucks coming out, coming out down there, sitting over to Tuolumne County. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Topmelli.
What? I just got a lot of budgets.
A couple, couple items, and one that she brought up. There, there is an item on there that could use the C-MAC funding, and that's Valley Springs' Phase Two. And we need to get with COG and see if we can get some grant available to finish that project. And it will take up the C-MAC if we can get it in the position to go to utilize those funds for, commit those funds for it before we lose them. So that is one project we can look to utilize and keep those funds here. The other thing I want to bring up is you and I had a conversation, we met with COG, Melissa at COG yesterday, over Pope Street project. And the timeframe that you have on here, we were going to change that timeframe to 27, 28 for the construction portion of it.
Right.
So I want to make sure that that gets done because it's not done here. So the next time I see this project list, I'm just going to say 27, 28 on it.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have one quick question, and this is, you know, me not being on COG and not as educated on how the roads and the money works and everything, does C-MAC qualify for all Vulture 26 intersections? No?
It depends.
It depends on how you.
It depends on the design and what's going to be done there to qualify for it.
Just curious.
If you have, if we, coming up to that in a second, where you get Caltrans, I'm sorry. You get Caltrans to put in some bike paths, it would qualify.
Oh, man.
So, or something along those lines. You, you would qualify for it, but I'm not sure that's going to happen. But maybe possibly the design. I don't know. A roundabout would qualify it too because no, they don't stop. I'm just telling you what the, I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you what the qualifications are for the C-MAC.
My area of crucifying.
You have to reduce the carbon emissions somehow to qualify for it.
It's clean air.
It's clean air.
Mitigation.
Clean mitigated air.
Add property right next to it.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you. I would like to add on the slide, I think it's the fifth slide in, on the work that's been done in District Three. The Moran Road was brilliant. It is a major evacuation route, thank you. And I will say with the Mongi Street, Mongi Ranch Road, just from an aesthetic point, I would just like, and I'm, I'm very sensitive also because of the old Hubbard Ranch, what have you, that in District Two, that, that aesthetically, these bridges fit with our community. Mongi Ranch Road looks like an on-ramp for the 405 to me. And I don't, I know obviously there, there are all sorts of different codes and what have you that have to be aligned, but I just, again, think we are a rural community and what used to be a very charming county road is not. Thank you for your work and help with the spillway and the Sky High Snowplow, I've got to talk to you about that still, but I just wanted to thank you for the time and effort that you've put into my district issues as well. So thank you. All right, is there any public comment? Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Many of you know me already. My name is Bill Winhold. I am the Fire Chief for the Central Calaveras Fire District. I've been serving in this county since the 1980s in a variety of fire departments and ambulance service. I work for the County Office of Emergency Services. I'm familiar with the events that happen countywide and not just on a certain road or supervisor's district. I have a very unfortunate personal connection to that accident in January. The community up there has identified that section of Mountain Ranch Road to be dangerous for many years. The Road Department has recognized it as being a dangerous area with its signage and the extra efforts that they have done over the years. Over the last three months, we've been down the if only and what if paths prior to that event. And the conclusions of all those is we can't go back and change what has already happened. So when you're looking today at Public Works projects, can we do something to mitigate, maybe not prevent, but certainly limit the danger and the risk for something tragic like that happening in that same place again? I recognize that disasters happen all the time across the county, whether it's a traffic accident or a natural disaster. And so I appreciate the work that Public Works and the Road Department have done over the last couple of months of paying more attention to that section of the road. But I'm also realistic that if we have a bad storm, we have a fire, that the resources that have been focused on that part of the road for the last couple of months may not be there the next time that we have a crisis. So I'm asking, when you look at public safety and your prioritization, that you consider guardrail or surface treatment or whatever else to that particular part of the road so we can, like I said, maybe not prevent, but certainly limit the liability that we will have another fatality there and we lose another piece of this county's future?
Thank you, Bill. I just want to let you know we keep TJ with us here.
Thank you.
We do have an online comment?
Go ahead.
Tom?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Tom in Fasino, Calaveras Planning Coalition. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, the Calaveras Planning Coalition very much appreciates the board's concern for traffic safety expressed today. We respectfully request that the board consider adding one Public Works task for the coming year that relates to this item 39 on your agenda. As Supervisor Follendorf mentioned earlier, the board received a very informative report on the barriers to emergency evacuations during flood and fire events recently. The emergency preparedness assessment. That report was prepared with useful input from emergency responders and from the voters in your districts. That report identified hundreds of minor and major roadway maintenance improvements that need to be completed to improve the effectiveness of critical emergency evacuation routes. That report identified funding opportunities. As you saw on the future project slide on the very bottom of the list, that the emergency evacuation projects do have available funding. At the time that report came to the board of supervisors, you did a good job of identifying a few top priority projects. We ask that the board direct the Public Works Department to begin reviewing, prioritizing, funding, and completing that portion of the remaining projects that are under its jurisdiction. That way, the board will have good information to make clear choices to allocate funding in future years. Because we expect that it will take many years to complete those projects, the community needs implementation to begin soon. We want all the people of Calaveras County to be able to escape from potential deadly emergencies. We all want to provide our brave first responders with safe ingress to and emergencies and safe egress from emergencies. Thank you for considering this request.
Thank you. Are there any other online comments?
We have no other online requests.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the board.
I just, I just want to say thank you to Gary for bringing up some, one thing that I've been, I've known about, but Milton Road Bridge is something to take a look at and consider if there's been issues.
Any other comments? As this is an informational item, we'll say thank you unless there's any other questions you have.
No, we'll, we'll go back and make some revisions to this proposed program and return back at a future date next month to, for final approval.
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Robert. I was going to say, I knew you were going to bring that up. We wanted to break for lunch and, and the last two items.
You want to break for lunch?
Whatever you guys want to do.
Yeah, you made me see you're hungry in the past. All right.
You know what? I would love to break for lunch.
You want to break for lunch?
I think we should break for lunch if that's all right with you.
Do you guys, do you want to break for lunch?
Yes.
I got a break when I got elected, but I'll take another one.
We'll break.
I don't know how long the other two items will take.
Yeah, we're going to, we are going back into.
I was going to say, we do have another closed session item. We could do that over lunch.
Then when we're done, we're done.
Correct. That was the plan, was to do the closed session item.
Sorry, planning.
Sorry, Dana.
You're going to be here all day, right?
Sorry, Julie.
Awesome. So we'll break now at noon and come back at 1:00. Thank you. Come back. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you mind reporting out from our closed session?
Reporter for closed session today, April 22nd. Item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference legal cancel, re-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation, board action, no reportable action taken. Item two, pursuant to government code 54957A, consultation with Calaveras County Information Technology Security Personnel regarding matters posing a threat to the security of public buildings, essential public services, the public's right of access to public services or facilities, or a threat to critical infrastructure controls or critical infrastructure information relating to cybersecurity. Board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to item number 40. Madam Clerk, would you mind reading that out as well?
Item 40, informational item, planning. Receive the General Plan Annual Progress Report and provide direction to the Planning Department regarding continued general plan implementation.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members. Brett Sampson, your planning director. I have Gina Catherine here as well, a senior planner in the Planning Department. It's our honor to be here before you today. We're here to talk about the General Plan Annual Progress Report. I'll have a PowerPoint presentation for the next item, which is the housing element. I just wanted to go into, this is sort of a receive and file, but also to get direction on some of what I'd call the long-range planning. I just wanted to go into, this is sort of a receive and file, but also to get direction on some of what I'd call the long-range planning projects. You might have noticed that this annual progress report looks a little bit different than maybe ones you've seen in the past. The reason is, is that it's typical for a lot of jurisdictions to also provide what's called a five-year general plan review. And so, I know that we, I don't think this jurisdiction's been doing five-year general plan reviews, just sticking to the annuals and then updating general plan elements as needed, like the housing element needs to be updated every eight years. So, Calaveras County has been certainly complying with, with state law. But I do like the five-year snapshot. One, because we just updated our general plan in 2019. And this is kind of a first opportunity to show over the years what's happened. It also gives you an opportunity to directly look into the planning department on what permits we're processing, what that has looked like over a five-year period, the workflow that we're, we're handling, at least the workflow that's on paper, and really gives you the decision makers that transparency to look into the department and say, what, what are the, what trends are we seeing? What type of projects are the, is the planning department working on? And quite frankly, what are they accomplishing or not accomplishing? So, I do like the five-year snapshot. You will certainly continue to get the yearly snapshots, and this technically complies with a yearly update. I just wanted to add that extra information for your deliberations and so that you know what, what we're up to and how we're spending taxpayer money. So, this is an annual report. And in the beginning of the report, we get into some of the long-range planning projects that have been completed in the years one through four of the review. I'm not going to get into those projects. That's in the past, but there were some pretty, pretty, let's say, heavy lifting general plan amendments that were conducted. And then, of course, in 2019, we did a comprehensive general plan update. And so, this report also gives you and the public kind of a summary of what was done during that 2019 update. So, this is just kind of a refresher for the public of what happened in 2019 and the, what rules changed and what rules we're playing by now. So, really, it's page nine of the report that gets into what was done in the last year and then will flow forward into this next year. So, there is the general plan implementation program. Attached to your report is a very extensive table that shows every general plan implementation measure and a status of that measure. So, that's the biggest component in the annual review is to give you a status check and the public a status check on where these implementation measures lie. They're either in progress, they're either complete, or they're incomplete. Obviously, many of those implementation measures are, you know, it's our wish list and our mission statement on things to accomplish, and yet it is completely driven by resources and funds available. So, you'll see some implementation measures are, haven't been completed and have been sitting there, and others have been completed fairly quickly. So, I just wanted to call your attention to that table in the back. That'll give you a status check on any implementation measure in the general plan. But as to what the planning department was up to in the last year and the long-range planning projects that were accomplished, one of the biggest ones was the Copperopolis Community Plan. Special thanks to Peter Maurer, interim planning director prior, who really spearheaded that. So, the Copperopolis Community Plan was adopted and is in effect as we speak. There's also really the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This wasn't really a dedicated planning project. We provided some input and some review, but that really, that kudos really goes to the CEO's office and all of the hard work that they did. But I did include it on this because it is a type of planning project. It's something that the planning department might take over implementation of portions of in the future. So, it might be part of our future workflow. And then, of course, there's the Cultural Resource Management Ordinance that was also adopted, and that is also in place. I'll let the, the board know that we got our first interest in a Mills Act contract to help lock up, lock up some historic buildings in, in Calaveras County. It's just initial interest, nothing more than that, but I wanted to let the board know that people are becoming aware that this is a possibility. So, those three heavy lift, long-range planning projects were completed this last year. There are also three long-range planning projects that are in the works, so to speak, and that are very close to being completed. The first is the greenhouse gas reduction plan. There is a draft of the reduction plan that exists. And we are going for COG funds to help support the CEQA effort to go with the plan. And so, we're hoping to use those funds. It's about $45,000 to complete what we think will be a CEQA mitigated negative declaration on the greenhouse gas reduction plan. And so, we are waiting a little bit for those funds so that we cannot tap into the general fund. So, there is a slight delay on that. But we still think fall of 2025 is a reasonable, for it to be back to you for your consideration. CEQA would be hopefully complete by then, and it would be before you. Another one is the Oak Woodland Mitigation Program or Oak Woodland Ordinance. That is also in final draft form. We are finalizing CEQA as we speak, and we plan on going through planning commission and then to the board here shortly. I've tagged that for summer of this year. That'll be before you to deliberate on. There's also the short-term vacation rental ordinance, which has been revised. And also, the noise, the portions of the noise code that goes with it has also been revised in coordination with the Sheriff's Department. That will also be coming before you the summer of this year. That will, that is in final draft form, and we're just taking some internal comments on that, and that'll be coming forward. So, long story short, you have three heavy lift activities that were completed this last year, and you have three heavy lift items that will be completed prior to the end of this year. So, you know, that really poses the question of what else, what's next? And so, you'll see on page 11 of the report, there is a future priority set by the board. This was set by you, the board, last year to, you know, I can kind of just go over the projects first and then talk about them. There's the open space plan, the five-year review of the general plan goals. That's basically what we're doing here. The update, the housing element, very heavy lift. Arnold Community Plan, special events ordinance. Updating the code in regards to mineral extraction overlay zones. Update the Williamson Act ordinance, and then also conduct a minor zoning code amendment. Where we're at right now with these is, in my mind, and this is just my opinion, that we have these three heavy lift projects to finish in the near term that I just discussed. Then we have some items that are on this future priorities list that are actually required by state law. And so, there's the open space plan that has a soon arriving deadline of January 1st, 2026. So, that is going to be an upfront priority for my department to try to achieve that deadline. We are looking at the contents of what has to be in that plan. I believe that what, what is going to happen is our open space element will just be updated to comply with state law. But that is a requirement, and that's a deadline that we fully intend to hit. The, another one is the updating the housing element. And I know that 2027, July, sounds like it's a long time away, but it's really not for a comprehensive housing element update. That'll be a very big heavy lift. That will definitely require significant general fund resources, and the deadline of that is July 1st, 2027. We are also looking at the special events ordinance right now. We have drafted some amendments to the special events ordinance. This is, one, because it's on the future priorities list, but, two, we're running into issues of, you know, we're kind of in this gray area of our, is a wedding defined as a special event? What is a wedding? And, you know, are they allowed in this county or are they not allowed in this county? So, we're putting forth an effort to really clarify what a special event is and where weddings fall into that and what you would have to do.
Do we allow weddings in this county or not?
In certain zones or not. We allow, we allow in certain zoning and up to a certain amount, but.
You mean the event in South, if they're putting on a huge event, not just getting married in the South?
No, no. We would allow, you know, what, what we're trying to do is clarify the in-between. Not the, I'm having a wedding for my, for my brother-in-law, or I'm having, you know, a very large birthday party or something to that effect. It's really these private institutions that are acting as a commercial wedding event, and we need to give them a process so that they don't adversely affect their neighbors, but yet they are allowed to conduct the business in certain zones. But it would be conditionally approved.
Thank you for clarifying.
As a general safety item, I would suggest that we don't allow them anywhere, anytime.
Comment, comment noted, sir.
I did come up against this yesterday with a phone call from a potential buyer of a home that has been used for weddings, and they would like to have it rezoned commercially so that they can do weddings there all the time. And it is not going to happen. But it's so important that we get this ironed out.
It, the public needs clarity. I need clarity in my determinations, and then you need also clarity into making your decisions and explaining it to your constituents. We're kind of in a gray area right now, and we need to get out of it. So, that's, that's why special events is kind of on the forefront. So, for these future priorities, we have three, you know, the special events ordinance isn't that big of a heavy lift, but the housing element, open space plan are very big heavy lifts. And so, with those, with three long-range planning projects to finish, with three that are absolute, you know, priorities with deadlines, there are these other projects that are on this list per board priorities. We would certainly look to start pulling those off as we complete other projects. But I also know that we have a new board member and that we have possibly different, different priorities from other board members than what was stated in 2024. So, I wanted to use this as an opportunity to get any direction from the board on any, any long-range planning projects or, you know, community-based projects you feel should be added to this list. Certainly, future updates are very possible because we have a lot of work to do before we can even get to that next, what next project there is. So, certainly, you can think about it and provide direction later at a certain, another board item, but certainly you could give direction today as well if there's something that's really on the front burner for you. No, any, any time, you can even email them to me. And certainly, like I said, with the amount of time that's going to pass between finishing these six projects, there'll be other bites at the apple. Let's just say that.
Supervisor Staubner? Ms. Baldwin?
No, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you, and all these projects are definitely still on my radar. Just reiterating with the special permits and the suggestions I made during the Parks and Rec meeting, I would like those to be considerations as far as we can stay within the guidelines of CEQA and everything else.
Thank you. Supervisor Staubner?
I guess my question would be, and I don't think that you would have the answer, it might be for the admin drop it. These past priorities tie into strategic planning. And so, how are we addressing strategic plan for the next five years with tying into our priorities and accomplishments? So, I guess that would be my go-to is what are those goals? Either county goal for the next five and then plug those in while recognizing that there are some things that we do need to address. I think Gary's going to bring one up. But, you know, there's little nuances. But I would feel better if I kind of knew what overall the county goal is before I drop.
That's a, that's a fair point. And certainly, this is geared towards specifically general plan policies. And certainly, the strategic plan could have some things in it that are, you know, want to be discussed in a holistic way and brought forward.
So, to Supervisor Folendor's question, we will be going through another strategic planning process this summer in order for the board to identify what your priorities are for the next five years. I think right now, what our planning director's indicating is that he has enough on his plate that probably if he gets additional recommendations by this summer, it would be fine to incorporate those at that time.
Absolutely. This is really just the first, first opportunity. And, and certainly, there'd be other opportunities beyond that as well because these are definitely slower projects, heavy lift projects, and, you know, the, the time that they take is, is considerable.
What's in front of you now, I'm fine with. I think there's a couple of these that I think a couple of us have been here for a while. We would love to see office lift. So, whatever support you need to get them done, get them done.
Fantastic.
Supervisor Staubner?
Yeah, I just want to bring up again, I've been on the board for a long time. And there was a former supervisor that was really pushing an ordinance called the dark sky ordinance. And we started, and Gina knows, we started on it and stopped on it, and then we still haven't got that before us. Maybe Gina can speak to it, but if we can get that on the list, does not be one of these priorities, but.
How you feel about that, District Attorney?
Is she watching? Is she watching this meeting?
I don't know if she is or not.
So, if you recall, we did roll in a whole new lighting section of the zoning code when we updated it last summer. So, if you think that that needs to be more different, whatever direction you feel that we need to take, then certainly we can have that discussion. But at this point, we feel that we've accomplished that dark sky ordinance with the language that is now in Title 17.
Yeah, we don't, I believe at this point with the new code, you know, what's called light spillage from a property line is not allowed.
That was more what that covered was the light coverage, like a bright light on somebody else's property versus a light going up in the air. So, I'll revisit it, but I think there was some controversy about actually being a dark sky ordinance versus property infringement.
Supervisor, another Michelle Potts, we're very passionate about that as well, so you can ask her.
Yes, she was.
Any other questions? Supervisor Staubner?
I just, I just want to say thank you for talking about the five-year. We had this discussion about the general plan when we did it, and also the strategic plan. Thank you for bringing that up, Supervisor Folendor. You know, not something that'd be set on the bookshelf, something that's stand the desk, and things are fluid. Laws change and direction of the county changes, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment regarding this item?
We do have online public comment.
Go ahead.
Tom?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Tom in Fasino, Calaveras Planning Coalition. We at the Calaveras Planning Coalition, thank you for the opportunity to address the planning department's general plan implementation report, item 40 on your agenda today. First, we thank the planning department staff, the planning commission, and the board of supervisors for their work implementing the general plan this past year. These efforts include approval of the zoning ordinance update, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, the Cultural Resources Management Ordinance, and of course, the Copperopolis Community Plan. Second, we look forward to the county adopting the greenhouse gas reduction measures and the Oak Woodland Ordinance later this year. Third, we support the county's continued work on the general plan implementation priorities set by the board in August of 2024. We agree that top priorities include timely completing the open space element update by the January 1, 2026 deadline, and the housing element update by the July 1, 2027 deadline. We hope that the planning department will allow and seriously consider a full spectrum of public input when it provides suggestions for general plan improvements as part of its five-year general plan review. We continue to hope that the planning department will work with the residents of Arnold to draft design guidelines at the same time the department helps draft the community plan. We also, we are also hopeful that the planning department will give serious consideration to the suggestions we made during the zoning ordinance update process to improve fire safety of special events as the department updates the special events ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Is there any other board comment? I just had a quick question. Are these two documents that we got last time still good for Monday?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I, I would just add, it did come up. We're, we're also looking in this for the board. We are looking to continually do minor zoning code updates, ensure there's consistency. You know, it's like dropping a pebble in a pond. When you do an update, you find things later on that are incon. When you do an update, you find things later on that are inconsistent with the update that you conducted. And so we're finding little glitches throughout the zoning code, and so we are working on doing a minor zoning code update as well moving forward. If the board or your constituents ever come across anything they find that is just egregious or this contradicts something else in another chapter, feel free to email myself or planning staff, and we will add that to the list of amendments to make.
Thank you. We'll move on now to item number 41. Adam Thurgood?
Item 41, informational item, planning. Receive a presentation on the 2024 Housing Element Annual Report to the California Department of Housing and Community Development.
Yeah, here we go. Okay. Stay on that. Share.
Sorry.
Oh, is it not? Oh, is it not? sharing?
It's sharing.
Oh, there we go.
There we go.
All right.
Now we're good.
Well, now we're really talking about another annual progress report, but specific to our housing element. This progress report is required by state law, and the deadline was April 1 to post it up to the state's website, and we have done that. We beat the deadline. So, and if for some reason we had any changes to this report, we could always re-file another updated report, but we did make the deadline. And this is our yearly housing element progress report.
And that goes with the question, I mean, once you start getting into it, Brad, I'm sure you'll address it, but with the way things are going in housing and building and development, not going downward trend right now, how do we get there?
Absolutely. That'll be, that's coming up, the constraints of affordable housing, for sure. This is just an overview, and these are some general questions that I'll get into in some later slides, but what is the housing element? What is the housing element annual report? Why is the annual report important? And what does the annual report tell us? The housing element is a state-mandated element of a general plan. There are seven mandated elements of a general plan. The housing element is one of them. Jurisdictions sometimes have additional elements that aren't required by law. We are certainly one of those jurisdictions, but there are seven that are required by law, and the housing element's one of them. It assesses the housing needs of a jurisdiction. It analyzes the regional housing needs allocation, arena allocation, that we are allocated from the state. It outlines objectives to meet housing needs. It must be certified by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, and currently, our housing element runs through 2027. So we did update it in 2019. We have until 2027, and so we do have a current housing element as we speak. So what is the annual report? It's really, it's the same thing as the general plan annual report. It's a snapshot of how we did this last year. It analyzes housing production and inventory. It provides updates to housing programs, discusses successes and challenges to the housing objectives. Certainly, those challenges are housing stock and cost of construction. It's submitted to the governor's office and HCD as well, and it's required by law. And so what happens if you don't have a, a housing element that's in good standing, let's say, or that hasn't been certified by the state, is certainly you wouldn't have any grant opportunities to avail yourself of all of the grants that we're talking about for affordable housing, REAP, LEAP, anything like that. We would more than likely not qualify for any of those grant funds because we would have a defunct housing element. So it's, it's important to keep it updated. It's also important to know how you're doing with housing in general and affordable housing as well. So it analyzes housing trends. It informs prioritization for remaining housing objectives, good standing necessary for state funding. It also provides that input, you know, public input of if a member of the public wants something done with the general plan housing element, this is just another opportunity once a year for that member of the public to interject and say, hey, I'd like you to look at this, or I'd like you to look at that. So it's just another touch point for the public. This is the housing production data, and this is permits issued by affordability. So this is affordable housing. You'll see on the left-hand side, that's the income levels, all the way from all the income levels to above moderate, moderate, low, very low, and extremely low. As you'll see, we included a comparison between 2023 and 2024. In 2023, we had 96 total all-income-level affordability permits issued, and then in 2024, we had 76. To really go down, really, the moderate is, you know, what a lot of people typically call the missing middle, that is, you know, 38 units in 2023 and '27 and 2024. So relative, you know, you know, we've gone down a little bit in issuing affordable housing permits, but we are kind of on trend with what's been going on in construction in general as compared to 2023. Here's our housing inventory data. This is housing units and basically number of completed units. And again, we're looking at certificates of occupancy. And this is really the, what I call the table of all tables. This is the state's table. This is our table. This is how we're doing on our RENA numbers and how the state would interpret how we're doing on our RENA numbers. And so you will see our total, our total allocation was over 1,000, and to date, we have 519 built, and we still need to complete 711. And so after six years into this RENA cycle, and we're about to get hit with a new RENA cycle, we've just met with the state, they've showed us their numbers that they're planning on allocating to us, they're relatively the same as what you're seeing here. There's not a big increase in allocation or a big decrease. It's, it's a different number, but it's in the same ballpark as these numbers. But after six years in, we've achieved roughly 42% of our RENA goal. To be on track in this cycle, we should be at 75%. And so, you know, we are behind the curve, so to speak, in achieving our RENA numbers. Now, a lot of things go into that. Supervisor Stoppa, you mentioned, you know, it's cost of construction, grant availability for affordable housing developers is critical. They typically have multiple funding streams that are grant-oriented. If grants aren't available or if the total amount of grant money is less, it's difficult to get these projects built. There's also the cost of construction, and a major constraint that we're hearing from developers that want to build affordable housing is the prevailing wage requirement for grant funds. And so prevailing wage really increases the cost of construction across the board. And so this isn't true all the time, but it's been my experience that kind of where grants have gone in prevailing wage, that you basically need the grant to pay for the prevailing wage, and that's all you get out of it. And so that's not true all the time. There's different instances where that, where that moves, but prevailing wage is definitely a constraint. Getting approvals through local jurisdictions can be a constraint as well. Maybe somebody's proposing an affordable housing project that the decision-makers feel isn't a bad location or isn't a good project. So these are all discretionary projects as well. So there's quite a few constraints to this, but we are making project, progress. We are at 42%. We are about to get a new allocation that isn't a vastly increased number. So I'm, I'm confident that we can make some strides in this over the next several years and really eat away at this number. We need to really be pushing for grants. We have a fantastic economic development director in Kathy Galino, who is here, who might be speaking in a subsequent slide, but she's really pulling on the levers, reaching out to developers, trying to get people to come in to meet with us, to get into a pre-application meeting and to talk about potential sites where they may build. So we are really pushing to attract people to our house, but there are some severe constraints, and especially right now with what we're hearing with, with federal grants, and, you know, they might, some might be on hold, some might not be available, some might be getting canceled. We'll just have to see how that plays out into the future, but it's a very flexible world when you don't know what your grant situation is going to look like. So this is our RENA table, and again, we are about to start the next cycle, and we're going to get a new allocation. So next year, this table will look different. It'll have, hopefully, quite a few affordable housing units built, but there will be a total, a different total RENA number that's allocated. Go ahead, sir.
These numbers, are they based on building permits?
Yes.
So.
Yeah. It's building permit and then occupancy, so somebody's living in it. But certainly, it's, it's a built structure. Some recent program updates. There was the zoning ordinance effort that occurred, and there were development standards included for supportive housing. There was a minimum density standard applied. We also are encouraging second-floor housing units. We're also encouraging now housing units on the first floor of certain sites that can qualify for that mixed-use designation. So we're determining that even first-floor housing product is sometimes allowed as well. We also reduce parking for multifamily housing. So that's another incentive to incentivize certainly multifamily housing, but just housing in general. We also included mobile and manufacturing housing in H-2F, cohousing, farmworker housing, single-room occupancy units, and group homes. So the long story short from these programs, when you guys updated your code, the decision-makers really made a fundamental decision to make housing as flexible as you possibly could. And you added in some perks, some design standards, relief, and then also added in some additional definitions like for group homes and farmworker housing to allow for different types of housing types. So that was a fundamental decision that the board made in 2019. Some more program updates. Conducted a vacant land inventory. Also, the REAP and PLHA grants as well. We also identified surplus land. We also have implemented housing choice vouchers, and also identified reasonable accommodation for persons with disabilities, and that's a fantastic thing to implement, certainly for accommodations and for people with housing, certain housing needs. Many times, it's a combination of issues that are denying somebody adequate housing. It's not just one thing, it's many things. So I think the, the menu of options that you approved in the update was, was critical. We also, as far as ongoing programs, we have rehabilitation funds. We are acting for the preservation of properties, energy conservation, and also we have down payment assistance. And we have a program update. I didn't know, Kathy, if you wanted to come on up and.
Good morning, Chair Hubbard and Honorable Board. Kathy Galino, your Economic and Community Development Director. And so PLHA is the permanent local housing allocation that the county receives as an allocation from the state. We have three programs that are active. The Down Payment Assistance Program, which is actually administered through Health and Human Services Agency, Lee Kimball. Also, we have our Home Accessibility Modification Program, which is great. We also partner with Habitat for Humanity, because they have a similar program for helping homeowners stay safe in their homes. And then last but not least, is the pre-development and utility offsets that we just rolled out, and we are extending the deadline for that application process to April 30. We have received a couple of applications, so very exciting, and that will be coming back to the board for a ranking of those projects and funding opportunities for development.
So I'll just add, I think it was a, a very wise decision to put economic development into planning. I feel that they kind of go hand in hand, and so certainly in an effort to really spur affordable housing and to talk to affordable housing developers, I think that having Kathy in, in the shop is, is critical, and I think that was a very wise decision. And that way as well, economic development has access to planning help as well. So I just, that's one of the, the things that I've seen as I've come on, one of the biggest things that I've seen, a decision that was made that is really geared towards affordable housing, the economic development, so. But any public, any, any board direction or comments?
Comments? I have a silly, stupid question. With the, I mean, our population is going down. We just heard earlier today that there are 900 less seniors in our district. How, how is housing still such an issue?
You know, it's, the affordability issue is the big.
Tannamout.
It's tannamout. It's, it's the price tag. There isn't an issue 500 and above.
Right.
There's, there's a huge issue in below that, below that mark, and there's a huge issue in somebody who, you know, even makes, let's just talk about that missing middle and what it takes to, you know, get housing if you're in that missing middle. Many, many Calaveras County employees are in that missing middle bracket, and so you're right on that cusp of where you can't afford your own, you know, your own house or even your own condo. You are, you're renting, and so you are, you've been priced out of the market, so to speak. So in my view, it is, it still comes down to price point, even though we have a little bit of diminishing population. We must have also seen an influx during the pandemic of people relocating here as well, so that might have been, you know, might have hurt us a little bit. But I think there's a, it's the story of two worlds, where there's the, there's the more expensive homes and more expensive bracket that really hasn't been touched too much, and then there's the affordability bracket that is very hard to attain for somebody that's in that price point and/or to qualify for a loan.
Any questions or any public comment on this item? Super. Seeing as it's an informational item, thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Julie.
Thanks, Julie.
Okay, we'll move on to our last item, which is supervisor announcements.
In compliance with Government Code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of a local agency and may make other announcements or report out.
Supervisor Stoppa?
I'll be heading to CSAC tomorrow for the Legislative Conference in Sacramento. I'll be bringing up some of the affordable housing issues, see if we can get the state to work with us on possibly relaxing some things that make it cost more while still providing safety course. And, you know, I'll ask them again how they can hold us accountable for building affordable housing when we aren't in the building business. for, uh, building affordable housing when we aren't in the building business. Um, you know, I'll do it politely. I'd prefer for them to work with us. And then, uh, if anybody's able, because I'll be driving back up tomorrow, um, to make the CCWD, uh, after their meeting at four P M. Bertha Underhill is, uh, is, um, retiring and.
After twenty-some-odd years? She's been on there for, it's a long time.
Yeah.
Okay. Some District three. Some District.
Yeah, yeah. I said, I don't, I don't remember.
Yeah.
Remember back that far?
No. No. Um, but yeah, if you can make it, uh, we really appreciate it. Me and Gary would like to have some, uh, fellow people there.
Super. Supervisor Topnelli?
Um, I have nothing to report.
Supervisor Pollendorf?
Yes. I just want to alert the board to let them know that a letter was sent, um, to the District Ten, um, director, uh, from the B-PAC Committee for District Ten. And for those of you that don't know what the B-PAC, it is the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee for District Ten. Um, I have asked in the past if there was anyone else that wanted to sit on this. Um, we have two reps from Calaveras County. Anyways, a letter was sent, uh, requesting Caltrans consideration of closing Highway Four. There's a lot of nuances, but I want everyone to know that Calaveras County was noted on an organization that supported it. And by no means had any of these other organizations, such as even Alpine County, had to come to any board to, um, validate this. But this letter has been willy-nilly sent out. Um, so if you see it in the media or you see that, um, just know, one, I was not at the meeting last week, so I did not note on this. And this has been a three-year, um, discussion. And, um, I'm not quite sure why they added these organizations, especially jurisdictions when our respective boards did not actually authorize of support. So I just want to put it on everyone's alert because I'm sure this will go out.
Amanda, would you mind just briefing everybody on what the subject matter is?
Yes. So, um, the B-PAC Committee, mind you, this has been going on for three years, want to close Highway Four from Alpine all the way over to Markleyville for what has now finally been, I think, appetite for a one-day bike and walk, similar to what they do on Tioga. Um, but there has been some processes that have needed to happen. And anyways, um, I guess last week, this committee voted to send a letter to the district rep, or district director, asking for consideration on this. Um, but there's a lot of things that need to happen. Um, but.
It's a huge disconnect because.
Yes.
The B-PAC Committee wants Caltrans to take this on board as their, as though they're an events committee, and there is no events committee. The bathrooms, parking, all of that, there's nothing. And it's, it is a big nothing. It's incredibly frustrating for Supervisor Pollendorf.
Yes, and Supervisor Woodrow, um, has been part of this over the last couple of years. And Supervisor Heberti has, um, been on, I, they have both been on as public members. Um, and we have been working together to try and get that messaging out. Like, there is a process on this. Um, however, um, they have not liked what I have said. And so if you come across those emails, they're very, um, colorful. Um, but we have been advocating and letting this committee know that, um, in front of Caltrans, that, you know, there's a process that needs to happen, specifically since the majority of this is going to happen in Alpine County, and they need that jurisdiction behind it. Um, nevertheless, um, this is District Ten-wide, so this isn't just Calaveras County. It's San Joaquin, it's all of District Ten on this committee, um, participating. And the intent of this group originally was to be feedback, an advisory committee on bike and pedestrian projects within the jurisdiction, and it is crafted into this. I don't know, I think Martin said it best.
I don't think I can say that loud, loud here yet.
Yeah, yeah. Um, it, it just been, it, the intent and way it's going is not matching up right now. But I just want to let this board know that by no means did I, did we vote, do anything, but it is out there in the media at this point.
Thank you.
Fun times.
Supervisor Randolph?
Um, I attended the first five commission meeting on April eleventh, the Calaveras County Housing Resource Partnership Meeting on April sixteenth, and a portion of the Calaveras County Parks and Recreation Meeting on April seventeenth. And I would like to announce a save the date for June fourteenth at nine A M. In West Point is a wildfire preparedness event.
Super. Thank you. Um, I was also at the meeting on the sixteenth, but I would like to, uh, do a shout-out. On Thursday, last Thursday, the tenth, uh, there was a ceremony at the sheriff's office. And I really wanted, uh, Calaveras does so many, so many amazing things that people don't know about. And I really wanted to give a shout-out to the cold case task force and Captain Tim Stern. Uh, Brenda Sue O'Connor, um, I'll just read it if I can. Brenda was born in Michigan on January twenty-fourth, nineteen sixty-five. Her life and the life of her loving boyfriend Lonnie Bond and their one-year-old child Lonnie Bond Junior were tragically cut short in Willseville in nineteen eighty-five. Brenda is being sent home to her sister to be laid to rest. May she live on an eternal light and memories of her loved ones. I think the fact that they were able to identify her, uh, cremate her remains and send them back to Florida for her sister was so commendable and finally give, uh, closure to the family. Thank you.
They, they, they've solved a tremendous amount of cold cases recently, um, something to, very, very noteworthy.
Yeah. And, and it's all, it's all done via, um, you know, their commitment to do fundraisers and fund the DNA research. Um, they're not getting it any other way but, except for, you know, putting their hand out, which is fantastic. So that's it. Thank you. Anybody else? Susan? C E O? County Council? Oh, perfect. Thank you all.